The January 21st, 2025, meeting of the Planning Board will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doreen, you please call the roll.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Here.
Rick Meinke?
Here.
James Hebert?
Here.
Bennett Flanders?
Here.
And Roger Beal.
Here.
We have a quorum. Bennett, in the absence of Jen Ladd, Bennett Flanders will be a voting member tonight. Let us take a look at the minutes. Do I hear a motion for an approval of the minutes?
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second.
Rick Meinke and James Hebert. Are there any suggestions, immodations, corrections, additions, quibbles, complaints? Hearing none, let's call a roll.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
And Roger Beal.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now go into items for consideration. Item 4.01, New Leaf Energy is requesting a site plan approval extension for the solar project at 720 U.S. Route 1, Assessors Map U-029, Lot 1. For the town, Autumn?
Actually, Helen Harmon is going to present this one tonight, Madam Chair.
Congratulations, Helen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So as Rachel said, the applicant is requesting an extension for an existing site plan approval that the Planning Board granted in April 2023 originally. So this has already been approved. They're just seeking an extension to July 3rd, 2026. The applicant is available for comment. They're seeking the additional time to complete a transmission level utility study. I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Just a little bit extra. They've already received an extension. So in order for them to get this new extension, the Planning Board needs to review it. What has been submitted is exactly the same as what we approved a couple of years ago. For the applicant, is there anything anybody wants to say? You don't have to if you don't want to.
Yes, this is Greg Rocher. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Great. Yeah, I'm a project developer at New Leaf Energy. So the reason for this request coming now rather than after the Planning Board approval expires in April is we are beginning the process of financing the project. And to keep that process on track, we are going to need our Planning Board approval to match what our construction timing is going to be, which at this time is expected to begin in spring 2026. But because we're in the project financing process, we couldn't wait until April to reapprove the project or get an extension. So we're not picky about whether it's a new approval or an extension, but we wanted to get this process started early. In our interpretation of the previous approval was that the town planner had the right to extend us once, but we weren't sure if that meant that the Planning Board would have the authority to grant an additional extension or not. So I'll leave it there. But yeah, we were mostly just looking to start this process now, whether it's a reapproval or an extension.
Thank you. Let me just comment briefly before we go to public comment. Because there was some confusion as to whether the planning department could actually grant a second extension, and I don't believe they can, or whether the Planning Board could grant an additional extension. Waterman and I had a conversation determined that the clearest, cleanest way to handle this was simply to approve the project again. So the clock would start all over. They have been working to get their funding and other documents lined up. So they came to us and we suggested that the best way to do that is to have them resubmit their project. There are absolutely no changes. Now, this is an item that's available for public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment? If there is, please approach the podium. And you have three minutes. If there is not, if there is nobody online, we have nobody online. In that case, I declare public comment over. We have a draft motion. Excuse me. I'm making assumptions. Would the board like to say something? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate because I was in support of this project back when it was submitted to us for approval, and I still support this project. And I want to just make a note for the record that almost 2 megawatts of power will be generated here, which will certainly help with the state's ambitious goal of 100% clean energy by 2040. So I continue to offer my support for this project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No. In that case, I will read the draft motion. New Leaf Energy, 720 U.S. Route 1 Site Plan Approval Extension. I move to approve the requested site plan approval extension requested by New Leaf Energy for a solar installation at 720 U.S. Route 1. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., dated 3/30/23. This request is approved with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The project will include a 1.99-megawatt AC ground-mounted solar installation at 720 U.S. Route 1. The site is on an approximately 92-acre property near the Saco City boundary. A one-year extension was granted on March 19th, 2024. The approval will extend New Leaf's energy existing site plan approval to July 3rd, 2026. The Planning Board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following conditions. Conditions: One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall (a) address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated 3/22/23; b) provide an updated storm water management design that provides flow rates below pre-development conditions in the two, 10, and 25-year storm event; c) update the plan set to include a level lip-spreeder detail associated with a proposed detention pond 1 outfall; d) provide finalized surety document in accordance with performance standards for utility-scale solar energy systems; e) provide an interconnection agreement from the energy provider; f) the applicant shall execute and record a storm water maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the storm water maintenance agreement is located in Appendix 1 of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter 419 Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance; g) work with the town E-911 Addressing Officer to establish an address for the solar array. This includes appropriate signage during and post-construction. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Two, the access road to the array shall be kept clear of snow during winter months. Three, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction storm water management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan and facilities' construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the storm water management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction storm water management plan, and that they will function as intended by said plan. Four, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the Planning Department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. A, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the final utility layout within the array shall be provided to town staff. This will be reviewed by the Planning Department. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Rick Meinke. Any comments? Nope. Doreen, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. It passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Just to confirm, should we expect some sort of letter stating that the extension has been granted, or what should we?
We will follow up with you tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next item, 4.02, Rainan Properties LLC and Chamberlain Construction, Inc., are requesting subdivision amendment review, Amendment Number 9, for the Dunston Crossing subdivision located off Broad Turn Road and U.S. Route 1, Assessor Map U-030, Lot 2V and 1107, for the town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to subdivide a lot that had previously been combined. The image on the left shows the Eighth Amendment was one large lot that had some property from the open space. And the proposal now is to divide that back into two lots and then to put that little leg of property back into the common ownership for open space. There are no other changes planned, and staff has no comments and recommends approval.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
Hello. My name is Chris Taylor. I'm an engineer with Sabego Technics, representing the applicant tonight. I really don't have much else to add. It was a previously approved subdivision, and kind of reverting back to the Seventh Amendment subdivision, and available for any questions if the board has any.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Is there any member of the public here or online who would like to provide a comment? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone online?
Jim? Jim, you should be good now.
I just had, hi, Jim Demesis. I'm at 88 Stewart Drive in the Dunston Crossing development. I only had a question, just a fact. I just couldn't tell from the video, and I couldn't get it off the town website, where that lot is relative to the development? I didn't know if we could put the map back up and blow it up a little bit. I just wanted to make sure I knew which lot it was.
Good. There it is. All right, there it is.
It's on Paulson, is that my understanding?
Yes, it is.
Got it. And what part of it, one final question, what part of it was going to be for open space or for public, back to the association?
It's this small piece right here on the previously approved amendment. See the triangle?
Oh, yeah.
That's part of the lot, and that will be going back to the Homeowners Association.
Thank you so much. No further questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a member of the public with a question? Seeing none, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. I have a draft motion. Excuse me, and I keep forgetting that the Planning Board is here. I'm just trying to get us out of here before, I don't know, 12 o'clock tonight. The Planning Board, do you have any questions? Any comments? Somebody's just got to keep waving at me at some point. All right, I have the draft motion. I move to approve the Ninth Amendment to Dunston Crossing subdivision proposed by Rainan Properties LLC and Chamberlain Construction is depicted in plan sets prepared by Sabego Technics dated 11/25/24, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The amendment constitutes the Ninth Amendment amended subdivision of Dunston Crossing. This includes dividing Lot 107 into Lots 106 and 107, with remaining open space to be conveyed to the master association. conveyed to the master association. No other changes are being requested at this time. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the subdivision zoning ordinance. This this shall be reviewed by the Planning Department. When we start crossing things out and adding things, sometimes stuff gets lost. However, I need a second.
Second.
Rick Meinke is fast on the button. There is a second. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Ben Flanders?
Yes.
Roger Beal.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, 4.03 Grandin Aggregates LLC is requesting preliminary site plan review for a contract zone amendment to their wetland mitigation project project update loaded located at 281 Beach Ridge Road, assessors map R013, Lot 7 for the town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bit different. This preliminary site plan approval is part of the contract zone process, and it's not technically a site plan, but rather a conveyance exhibit that shows what will be conveyed to the town upon the approval of the amendment of the contract zone and what will remain in the contract zone. So the green on the screen represents what is ready to be conveyed to the town, and then the blue is remaining. The contract zone language is in draft form and being reviewed by our legal counsel at this point, and this will go back to town council for final action on the contract zone, and then it will be back before this body to approve the final site plan, which will be the conveyance document as well. There were a couple of conversation points that you all brought up when we had our joint workshop, and I put those on your staff memo, recommended items for discussion. One item that was mentioned was a desire for an access easement through the remainder, so the blue portion from Beach Ridge Road along the river, to see if we could maybe get folks down to the green section in the interim part. And then there was also discussion for construction of trailhead or facility parking along Beach Ridge Road when this portion is finally handed over to the town. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that, or I can forward along any comments or suggestions with this preliminary site plan approval for the council to consider when amending the contract zone.
Is there someone here for the for Grandin?
Okay. We're going really fast, so.
What I'm going to do is I will hold a public hearing now and hope that Mr. Grandin gets here faster than seven. So are there any comments to this? I will note that we have received a an email from Stanis Moody Roberts concerning the contract zone amendment. It will be entered into the record. Is there anyone else, a member of the public in person or online that would care to comment?
A hand up? Mike Mason?
Go ahead. Mike, please, the name and address, three minutes.
Yes, hi, thanks. My name is Mike Mason. I'm on Amanda Lane, excuse me, which is off of Beach Ridge Road. I've spoken in support of Grandin's work on this land before, and I will reiterate that. I did want to follow up on a on a couple of things. I understand that Mr. Grandin is is not there, so perhaps this question can't be answered. But I was wondering about a status of the the other portion of the land that is not scheduled to be conveyed right now. The last time that Mr. Grandin spoke at the town council meeting or the the combined meeting, that was there was some some remaining questions about what the next steps on that were. So I was hoping that he might share an update. The other thing is I noticed in some of the materials for the packet that there was reference to reserving a parking space on the Beach Ridge roadside, and it said along the Nunset River, which I believe is incorrect. The the access point on the Beach Ridge roadside is is not along it's it's near, but it's not along the Nunset River right now. So I would just highlight that that I believe that's an error, and and we would want to someone would want to take a look at that. Other than that, again, Grandin's been a good neighbor, and we're we're very supportive of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Autumn, do you can you respond to any of those? Because I believe you've had conversations.
Sure. So my the contract zone that will be drafted for the council contemplates an extension of time for the project that will remain to there's a deadline put on it, December 2026 for a wetland project. And if that happens, then they will go through, forgive me, I don't have the dates in my right in front of me, but they'll have a 10-year, two-year process to be able to finish that, and then the monitoring period will take place after that. So we could possibly be up to 2038. If within that time period, December 31, 2026, no wetland mitigation project is undertaken, the property will revert to the town. And as far as the recommended items for discussion, the one was for an access easement from Beach Ridge, and then it goes down, if you can imagine it going down along the along the river there to get access into the green section. That was the intent of that. And then the parking spaces were to be at the Beach Ridge entrance. Hope that helps.
So I I'm sorry, can you clarify that that easement along the Nunset River? That's that is private land, to my knowledge. So I that's what I'm trying to clarify, that what the
So if you, I don't know if you can see.
Yeah, I can. Yep.
So the blue section from Beach Ridge, what was contemplated was some sort of way to get people down from this area down here.
I see. I see. Okay. Okay. Great. I I my interpretation was that it was an easement along the Nunset River from Beach Ridge Road, but I I'm clear on that now. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that that bell that you heard was the three-minute mark.
And that's the hook for me. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. All right. I'm going to declare public hearing over. If Mr. Grandin gets here, we will allow him time to speak. All right, please, please, I also have somebody online, but go ahead. Name and address.
My name is Stanis Moody Roberts, and I'm at 38 County Road, and I I sent a very late email to you guys about this.
I Mr. Roberts, I did I did read it, or I did admit it to the record. So it is on the record.
Thanks. So I won't summarize it, but I'll just get to the point, which I'm really, really upset that this would even be considered, because it's now seven years after this entire property by contract zone agreement was supposed to be transferred over to the town in its entire in its entirety. And even before that, there was supposed to be public trails made on the sections that had been finished, which half of the property has a conservation easement in place with the town as of 2012. And there's been a complete lack of oversight and follow-through with this contract zone. And I I don't understand why the town is so so trying to cater to the developer and not to the public and not to the residents of the area that could benefit so much from what this property has to offer. And the entire tension of this contract zone and of that contract zone amendment was to make sure that this property, as soon as possible, became the recreation area that has so long been envisioned for North Scarborough. And by approving this site plan and by approving this contract amendment, we're now looking at that western part of the property, which is the most important part of the property for a trail system, being pushed back to 2038. And not only that, there's the reason why it's so there's so much opportunity there is because right now, without that constructed wetland, there's an enormous amount of space to do more than just trails, but to also put in recreation fields and and other amenities. What I envision is something like Twin Brooks in Cumberland. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but it's such a gem for the town and for the area, and includes a whole manner, a whole manner of of different different amenities, recreation amenities, from disc golf, from this trail system that, again, we we don't even have a cross-country trail here in in Scarborough. Our cross-country team has to run out and back along the Eastern Trail and can't even host any tournament events. And this would be the perfect location for for a a state-of-the-art trail system and also for a trail corridor, as I mentioned, too, that would do even more than just a trail system, but connect the various parts of Scarborough together. And one major concern I have is that
Please, please wind up.
I'll finish up. In 2019, Mr. Grandin stated that there was only 17 acres of wetland creation left. And now I'm hearing that it's 27 acres of wetland creation that they're planning to do. And that's just pushing the goalposts further and further, increasing the amount that that they want to do. This area was not previously excavated.
Please, please.
Northern portion wasn't previously excavated. It was forested land that the Grandins created.
We have we have your we have your written testimony, which I believe you're giving to us now as well. Let me ask the date 2038. What is that date, actually?
So that would be the date that for the remaining parcel, and and Mr. Grandin's here as well now.
Okay, good. In that case.
The date, so there is an approximately 10-year monitoring period after the creation of wetlands that specific things cannot happen on-site. And so that is the worst-case scenario, if you will, I believe, when that monitoring will be complete, is that 2038 date. So.
So so may I ask, the project would be actually completed sooner. It's the monitoring.
Correct. It would be completed in 2028.
So 2028, the project would be completed. Monitoring then takes 10 years. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Grandin? You didn't have a chance to get your say. So if there's anything you would like to present in terms of the in terms of the request to the board? Please say. We moved a lot faster than folks expected.
I'm late. I thought it'd be plenty early. I had I have a presentation, if you'd like, to give some of the history of the project, if people aren't familiar with it. If people are totally familiar with it, I can jump right into answering the questions. It's totally whatever the board wants. Sorry, I'm late. I thought everything started at 6:30, and I thought I was number three on the list after a couple major projects.
We we move fast.
Okay, gotcha.
The all right, let me let me say that the public here, oh, Roger, the public hearing is over, but I know Roger has some questions. So let me do. Roger does not have a question?
Well, I just have an administrative question for for Autumn. I don't, maybe it might be me, but Autumn, I'm having a hard time with your volume. I can hear everybody else on a dais and and the other speakers. I don't know whether this is just for the public's point of view.
I'll talk louder.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing over and turn this over to the board. Please, folks, if you have any questions of Mr. Grandin, now would be the now would be the time, if you think they will help dispel some of the concerns. Bennett, Ben, go ahead.
I've got kind of one comment, and so I was at the October meeting when we discussed this with the town council, and the question I brought up there was what would happen if no action was taken by anybody? And right now, the answer that I seemed to get there was that there's no real legal enforcement mechanism to turn over the land now. And it's a town council action ultimately that has to be taken. So I think that by, you know, working on this with the applicant, you know, we can we can work out a better system that actually has an enforcement mechanism to make sure that the land does get turned over to the town in a timely fashion. Additionally, the monitoring period is useful for the town. We don't have to then pay for all the well monitoring. So the property remains in Mr. Grandin's name until that period is over, but he is also then responsible for the monitoring costs. So that's part of the reason that I remember from the previous meeting. Just wanted to clear it up for the public. I don't think I have any questions at the moment for Mr. Grandin, but.
Thank you. I I have just a brief comment to the concern about lack of oversight. The town council with the planning board has held workshops on this, so has held them over the years. So there has been oversight and a constant review of the process. Do you have anything else to say, Mr. Grandin?
No, that is correct. I mean, right from the word go, from when we started in the mid to late 2000s, we've been in front of the board. Each individual projects has basically been four mitigation projects, all part of the whole, and each one has been individually brought back in front of the board. There's annual monitoring from DEP, Army Corps of Engineer. The town gets all those reports. They're 30 to 40 pages long. So over a course of the 10-year period, it's a formal oversight and report by a wetland scientist, and it's submitted to DEP, the state, the town, as well as the federal government, Army Corps of Engineers. So basically, the proposal that we're working through, that we were in front of the council and planning board joint meeting a couple months ago, and now before tonight, is twofold. We're trying to the the portion that is 100% complete, the wetlands mitigation areas have been built, the 10-year monitoring periods are complete, 100%, all the boxes are checked. So that's one thing we're trying to get that over to the town. We're working through the legal deeds and stuff with that. That's under review with the town currently. And then concurrently with that, we're looking to, you know, basically codify the end date of when this project will be done, which we're shooting for 28. So two scenarios there. If no wetlands project is built because of lack of a customer, per se, then it would be just a regular a regular reclamation like any old other pit or quarry. And then that would be turned over to the town, then boom, cut and dry, no monitoring, done. If a wetlands project is built, we're currently in negotiations with someone to do that, but nothing that's been signed, but actively negotiating that. Then, at that point, we have to have it built and ready to go by the end of 28, and then that 10-year monitoring period would be necessary, as with all the projects with this. Not to say that there couldn't be some limited use with that other half, if you will, but there will still be need needing some upkeep based on what's happening with the project. As far as the acreage that the gentleman before was speaking, 17 was just an estimate. You know, it's a fluid thing. We'll be working through design. Our customer said, can, you know, is it possible to make more? We're not cutting down additional trees to make this. This was already open area. Just to answer that question, why why the difference in acreage?
Thank you. Anybody else on the planning board with questions? Ben?
Sorry to go again. Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to ask, the monitoring periods, assuming that you do get a project going and by the 28, you get that all settled. and by the 28, you get that all settled, is there any reason that the public couldn't have, you know, mostly access to the property during that 10-year monitoring period?
Yeah, and we've been talking with Autumn and Tom about, about some use on that. We haven't really got through the details, but I think there could be once major construction is done and, but the only thing that we fear is invasive species, but I think with passive usage should be pretty limited. But there still would be some limited activity based on if, is it functioning correctly? And that's all part of the monitoring processes. Is this little corner working, is it not? Do we have to go in and tweak it? Sometimes there's, some of the plants don't live. They literally count how many plants per acre, and if you're not meeting that threshold, then you have to go back in, plant more plants. So that's the whole process of that monitoring, just to make sure that it's a successful mitigation site. So I think there could be some, and that was probably one of the last things that we were talking about after the last meeting, the joint meeting with the council and the planning, so.
Thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Planning Board done? I have, I have no comment. I've been following this for the last several years. I'm pleased that 130 acres are going to be transferred, and we have 137 to go. I have a draft motion. I move to approve the project titled Preliminary Site Plan for the Second Amendment to the Larrabee Farm Wetland Mitigation Contract Zone Number Eight, proposed by Grandin Aggregates LLC. The project is depicted in the application document titled Wetland Compensation and Conservation Graphic, dated 5/10/2023, as further described by Exhibits A and B. Findings: This proposal would amend the contract zone to transfer ownership of 130.73 acres, Exhibit B, to the town. Upon approval and transfer, transfer, that property will revert back to Rural Farm, RF Zoning, with specific conservation deed restrictions. The revised contract zone area will be 137.5 acres, Exhibit A. No additional improvements are planned by the applicant. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan and zoning ordinances. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by James Hebert. Would you please call a roll?
Rachel Henrickson?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Ben Flanders?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Thank you. Project passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Grandin.
Again, apologize for being tardy.
As I said, we're moving fast here. Item 4.04, Setsor Properties, PLD LLC, is requesting site plan review for the redevelopment of the site for a FedEx Freight warehouse and distribution facility. The project is located at 70 Holmes Road, Assessors Map R032, Lot 14, for the town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this project has been before you several times. I will just do a recap. We started with a sketch plan review, October 2023. We also took a look at the site inventory and analysis, where you accepted what had previously been done. Master plan approval was December 11th, 2023. And then we reviewed this specific site plan project in May, July, and October of last year. The applicant at October essentially were, we had some conversations about access to the adjacent property, the continued discussion concerning water, lighting, and noise, conservation of wetlands. We also, at that meeting, heard a request from the board for a summary for what is everything that has been proposed and being proposed and that is included in your packet. And they did receive their DEP permit January 10th of this year. So this is the site that we are discussing this evening. The site does have a second phase for future parking. This was a concern early on in our review, that it was overparked perhaps, and so they have proposed this area and this area and this area planned north for future expansion. The access to the adjacent property, which the provision is required to have that shown on the plan, is now through the smaller wetland crossing area. Last time we looked at it, it was along the property line. They have also, in your packet, included deed restrictions for the wetlands to be conserved in perpetuity, except for this 50-foot right-of-way crossing. This is the landscape plan that shows the eight-to-12-foot berm that they're providing. It's also showing the extensive landscaping that's required and extra. They've also incorporated more landscaping in this area adjacent to the stormwater pond and this area as well. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. For the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Owens McCullough, civil engineer with Sibego Technics, here tonight on behalf of Setsor Properties LLC. We're struggling with a little connection here.
If that doesn't work, you can always join the meeting, and I can promote you, and you can share your screen.
Okay.
We're making up for that quickness we
I know, sorry. I'm not trying to. All right, so I gotta go to, I'm on the website. I just gotta go to, it would be on the agendas with the link?
Correct. Or you can go to the town calendar, whichever is easier.
I'll take the help. You can jump right in.
Yeah, I've navigated the site a few times.
Yeah.
Up towards your
Oh, it's just inside, yeah. It's just, it's all just, you know.
There you go.
Could you use that? It's a USB C.
Maybe this?
Nah, I don't have touch screen. They wouldn't let me have that.
You're in August of 22. It's not a good sign.
Well, I, you know, I am behind a little bit.
We're gonna get there this way.
Autumn, if you have it, I, well, we're working on it, I can, oh, Amy's gotta do it. No. I was trying to, I was trying to keep with the, with the pace, but I messed it up. Apparently, most new computers come with USB C connection, and this is HDMI. Thank you, whoever said that.
You do not have to provide any, any excuse for technology glitches. They happen.
Shouldn't be this difficult, but.
This gives me the opportunity to remind folks that we do not take anything new after 10 o'clock, and that sometime around, approximately around 8:30, which when we still may be trying to get the technology to work, I will have a five-minute break, bio break. Anybody else want to say something? Rick, anything to say?
I'm still tired because I stayed up too late. It was a good football game.
Hey, that's it. It's okay, I'll take it off. Don't let me walk out like this. Wow. That's a gaggle of components. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Wow.
Are we ready?
I, I think so. I don't know how to, I, I'm plugged in.
And you only overrides it later.
It is.
You're plugged in. Unless you have to send, there it goes.
The poet, Robert Burns, has a comment, has a line for this, and that is that things gay afta glay. They often roughly go to hell.
Yeah, well, it just did on me, so I do apologize. I'll start over. Owens McCullough was Sibego Technics, civil engineer here on behalf of Setsor Properties, PLD LLC. It's been a project that's been in the works for quite a while. We've been in front of the planning board a number of times over the past year, really. With me tonight from Setsor Properties is Keith Freiman, who's president. Keith, where are you? Oh, you're hiding behind AFC. And AFC Davis is the director of pre-construction. They're both from Setsor Properties. You've seen them here before. We've asked Trina Murphy from Real Estate Services for FedEx to also attend tonight. And also with this is Brian Rollins, who is with FedEx, also myself, and Amy Bell, who's a landscape architect. We had Diane Morabito come along tonight with us. She did all the traffic work on it. And Isaac from JIA Consulting, who worked on the lighting and the electrical engineering. And then we did ask Matt Reynolds from Drumlin Environmental. Matt, raise your hand, just so everybody can see you. And then also John Cressy from Beacon Environmental to attend, and of course, Rick Shene from Drummond Woods. And I didn't mean to make you laugh, blast, but, you know, you're closest to me, though. So it's been quite a team. I'm not sure how much questions the board will have. I think you've pretty much heard from everybody in the past, but as Autumn indicated, and I think this came out of the last meeting, we were requested to basically put together a summary of everything we have done, which is in the letter that dated January 9th that we prepared. One of the things in there was to get our main DEP site law permit, which we have received. That should be in your packet. As far as traffic goes, Diane Morabito has worked with Bill Bray, the town's traffic peer reviewer. They've worked out the details on what will be done. Bill has agreed and signed off on that, which includes paying the traffic impact fees at Payne and Holmes Road, per the recent adoption in the ordinance, which has the higher rates. Setsor has also agreed to pay an additional $250,000 over that, which had to do with some potential future signal improvements that'd be part of other work the town will eventually do. And then we're going to do full-depth reconstruction and a left-turn lane on Holmes, on Holmes Road, and then two lane widens on Holmes Road at the intersection with Payne Road, and then on Payne Road, heading northbound as it goes to the signal to improve turning movement. So all of that was agreed to, was quite an iterative process. We met with Bill and staff. Thank you to Angela and Autumn and everybody for meeting on that, but those details evolved and worked out and integrated into the plan. We've talked in the past that we had brought in an independent who did a noise study, and out of that noise study came the recommendation to build an eight-to-12-foot berm with landscaping on top of it. And Amy's here tonight, if we want to talk more about landscaping, but it's pretty much a continuous berm all around the entire site. Also, as part of that, we did add some trees for around the stormwater gravel wetland, and we did go to a phasing approach for the project to reduce the amount of lot coverage. And that impacted the parking that was all presented at the October meeting. That's all integrated into it. Just quickly to touch on the hours of operation, it's in the letter, just to codify it. It is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. However, trucks aren't running at all hours of the day. This has, this is a cross-dock freight facility, as Diane has gone through the traffic study. The number of trips that disgenerate, this isn't vans running out into the community making deliveries. This is bulk that comes in, gets unloaded, cross docks, some trailers, trucks might sit there for a few days, some might come in, unload, and then leave. But that generally happens during daytime. There would be some activity into the evenings, sometimes into the night, vehicles that might come in or leave, or employees that are working at the facility. Weekends are generally very low use. There could be employees there moving trailers around or loading and unloading for the coming week, but weekends generally have, are expected to have very little traffic movement on the site. Hydrology, we had Drumlin Environmental involved. There'll be a well on the site. We've actually sent out letters to all the neighbors. They allowed us to do some sampling, three of them did, of their wells. We've shared all those results with everybody. Our well is going to be drilled into the bedrock, and as everybody remembers, this is a very low-use water site. It's basically employees with water for toilets and sinks. We eliminated the wash bay from the facility. That was a conversation way early on, and that has been completely removed from the facility. So this is really domestic water use that will be on the site. Lighting, I know, Mr. Hebert has had a lot of conversation in the lighting. We appreciate the robust conversation around that. Isaac is here, in case there are any further questions around that. But we originally started with requesting a waiver to some of the standards. That has all gone away, complying with the standards, no waiver requests anymore. With that, it increased the number of light poles, but reduced the height, so we're working within the lighting policy of the, of the town. We did provide some conversation in there about community that came up a few different times. If there wants to be more conversation with that, we'll leave that to, maybe to AFC and Keith to talk about. But FedEx is, wants to be a community player in it. One of the, probably the most important aspects that we've changed in the project, and I'm going to go ahead, because this is going to need to be a visual, is that we have changed the alignment of the, the connection to the rear of the property. The original plan, which I actually have up on the screen, showed the access coming down along the side of the property line. We have since moved that and brought it into the site where my cursor is going, and it's in the packet that was submitted across the most narrow portion of the wetland to the rear property, because there was a conversation about making provisions to access the abutting property to the rear, because that land is landlocked in the industrial zone. And that terminates at the property line at upland area. So we came across the most minimal part of the wetland in the rear, gave access to the abutting property. And I understand that as of tonight, there was, Mr. Dickinson is here, I think there was some conversation out in the hallway, and I think they've come to agreement on, on what they would do to acquire access through, through this site. So that has been in process, has been worked through. The wetlands in the back, Rick Shene has drafted a declaration of covenant and restrictions. So there's, in the very back, I know this aerial is hard to see, but there's a wetland that comes up across the back of the site. It's more than an acre in size. We're proposing to put that in deed restriction and covenants that would be recorded in the registry of deeds. The only exception to that would obviously be that access to the rear property line at the most narrow point in the wetland. So that would be the only exception to it, but it would be put in a covenant and deed restriction for perpetuity. The, I think. The, I think, go back to this slide here. Keeps me on my list. Energy conservation and stormwater. So the project does include provisions for EV charging. As we noted, we're conserving those wetlands to the rear of the property. Stormwater, this site has no formal stormwater on it currently. We are actually reducing the developed footprint of the site because our footprint requires less than what's out there now. And we'll put in stormwater BMPs to collect and treat the stormwater. It includes a constructed gravel wetland and also includes an infiltration facility and porous concrete. Because if you remember from the last ones, they use concrete for their surface material on the project. We did note that there would be a phased development approach to the project. This really shows Phase 1. Phase 2 could extend out into this area back here. And there was some parking for future phased expansion. But we have reduced the footprint of it. There's a parking summary that is in the, it's a middle letter that we provided to you that gives the total of Phase 1, Phase 2, and then what the total would look like if it became necessary. As far as landscaping goes, we're basically encircling the perimeter of the facility with landscaping, a complete landscaping plan around it. There's two points of access to the site. One primary, which is in this location here. At the request of the fire department, we will have a secondary access into the site. That secondary access would have a gated gate with a Knox box on it. And it would come in by what used to be the office admin area into the site. For fire protection, we will be putting in a Cisterns facility. That's about 48,000 gallons of subsurface water storage that would be over here in this location. That will be coordinated with the fire department and is part of our building permit with the state. But that will all be underground and will provide for fire protection to the site. I, I can, I didn't want to go into any more specifics because I think everybody's heard a lot of this before. But we're here to answer any questions. If the board were to approve the project, the DEP's done. The applicant would move forward with addressing the conditions of approval that Autumn has written into her summary. And then the applicant would move towards posting bonds and all those things, moving forward with the off-site design and coordinating with the town so that the project could actually move forward into construction. So with that, we thank you for your time. One, one comment I would make, and Rick, I think I know what Rick's going to ask me, is we, the access through the site we showed is 50 feet. Depending on how that goes with the negoti, and the final wording, that might increase to 60 feet. So your ordinance has, and it has commercial industrial right-of-way with standards that are 50 feet or 60 feet, depending on the average daily trips. We, we don't know what Mr. Dickinson is actually going to propose on it, but the applicant is willing to go to 60 feet if, if we need to for that future access. Did I miss anything else? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Let me say that we have received communications from Bergen Parkinson Attorneys, Courtney Lorak, Dale McConnell-Tem, and Laurie Baxter. I'm going to do something just a little different right now. We have received a request for accommodation. Usually, we give three-minute speech for each person. However, due to extenuating circumstances, someone who would ordinarily want to speak is not going to be able to do that. So I'm going to offer Denise Hamilton six minutes to, to speak, to take into consideration the fact that her husband is unavailable to speak. So a public hearing is open. Anybody who has a public comment, please approach the podium, give your name and address.
Thank you, Denise Hamilton, Two Rod Road, and thank you for the accommodation. First, is under their community portion regarding the memorial, it comes across as, you know, this grand project that they've come up with. But that's not what it is. It's a legal binding agreement between the original purchaser of the land and ourselves. So this, this follows along with the property and any future sale. And will be registered as an easement, right-of-way easement, in the registry of deeds. Access for the so-called interior lot, I'm a little confused on the picture that was shown before with the new access that's still going through the wetlands. It shows it going down along the office, which would be the emergency gated curb cut. It's gated. It's supposed to be a private. And the ordinance states that any access to the interior lot is supposed to be shared. This is one of those things. If this project started from Phase 1, and the town, the landowner, the prop, this landowner, as well as Mr. Dickinson, as he raised at a previous meeting, the access would have been shown, should have been shown, to share their entrance and exit to this property, not an additional curb cut, which goes against the ordinance. And also, on the additional phases for parking, do those come back before planning board for approval? Or is it a blanket approval from the beginning?
Goes to the planning department for their review, and they determine, or request the planning board to determine if the planning board needs to see it. Ordinarily, if it's simply a case of putting in the parking, the parking spaces that have already been shown. There's a section on there that shows where they would be. The planning board would not see that.
Okay, thank you. And the road posting, this Holmes Road is posted from 40 Holmes Road all the way to the Saco line, has been for decades. The road paving that was done last summer was part of MDOT's Light Capital Paving Maintenance Schedule that was released on January 18th, 2024. There was actually, there was absolutely no improvements made between 40 Holmes Road and 70 Holmes Road, to the beginning at 70 Holmes Road, to increase road integrity so that this road is not posted. I understand that, you know, the developer's been forced to improve their portion in front, but that doesn't talk about what happens from 40 to 70. And how a public works director can arbitrarily say he won't post the road is just beyond all of us in the area. It's been mentioned many times, but not, by not only this committee, but others, other committees and boards, and how important it is for the public to provide input. God knows, I've been before you more times than I have finger and toes over the last three years. Almost every time, we're told something isn't allowed use, and it's your job, they follow the ordinance. Another item that is your job is to make sure you're following the State of Maine Planning Board guidelines, which gives you broad range of authority, that although something may be in allowed use and their i's are dotted and t's crossed, if there is a reason. Sorry, my paper's got. If there is a reason a project is not a good fit for an area, then you have a right to deny it. I brought this up at the last planning board meeting regarding the Roma Joes, where the planning board several years ago denied a project with Scarborough Donuts LLC because of traffic and safety. A indicated by them doing so, set a precedence, although some of you argued you're not that bored, and what they voted on has nothing to do with this board. The fact of the matter is, this board, just as previous board and any board before both of you, represents the town of Scarborough, and how things are handled does in fact set a precedence. You've made us believe over the last several years that just because something isn't allowed use and ordinance is followed, then we're SOL, which is untrue. In this case, traffic, safety, noise, pollution, negative impact on real estate values, water, et cetera. Yes, I have a dug well, and lack of water in our basement is nonexistent in the last 11 years. I fear what may happen with more development. We should not be forced to install a new well because of inconsideration of others if we go dry after they've developed. What benefits have been offered to the abutters for a use that doesn't fit our neighborhood? This board has forced the developer, FedEx, to do things that aren't part of the ordinance, like improve their, the portion of the road in front of their building, add a private entrance for emergency vehicles. Therefore, this board can and should say, you cannot operate a 24/7 operation as you abut a residential neighborhood, and it would be a nuisance and disruption. When this project was first introduced by a previous developer, a year and a half, two years ago, it was operating during the Good Neighbor Ordinance hours, although they don't have to follow it, which is a faux pas on the town's part. When it was initially introduced by this developer, it was similar hours. Then all of a sudden, at their second meeting, last spring or summer, it changed to 24/7. Put yourselves in our shoes, and if you lived in one of our homes, how would you feel? This project goes against the Light Industrial Performance Standards, MDOT 1. And if you're not familiar, you should reread it before any decision is made. Also, I've made multiple requests to staff over the last several weeks, received an answer late this afternoon, which I'm still not completely clear on, and wasn't enough time for me to consult with my attorney for clarification, whom I'd already been given legal opinion. If Autumn could comment on my additional question I sent after receiving the email today, I would appreciate it. If she's not able to answer, as she's asked the town attorney, then no decision, one way or the other, should be made on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it on? All right. Good evening. My name is Greg Braun. I'm an attorney at Bergen Parkinson in Kennybunk. I'm here on behalf of Daniel Dickinson, who is the member and manager of 121 Two Rod Road and 151 Two Rod Road, being the owners of the parcels that are interior adjacent without road frontage on Heath Road. I authored and submitted the letter from Bergen Parkinson. That is in your packets today, articulating and expressing our concerns and objection to this project as it related to a lack of an agreement for easement rights to those back properties. I'd just like to be clear and state on the record here that we have reached a tentative agreement with the applicant today. We've executed a letter of intent as it relates to specific terms for that easement right, and we would therefore formally withdraw any objection that we would have to this plan. The only things I would make, and I believe the initial presenter touched on them, is that while it doesn't indicate on the site plan, there is an agreement that to the extent the town would require it, the easement might be extended to 60 feet. And I do understand also that the necessary documents will be amended to indicate that change or potential modifications as it relates to the wetlands, should it be deemed necessary in the future. Other than that, I thank you very much, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak?
Donna Jackman, 175 Two Rod Road, where I've lived for 50 years, and I have been in this town 77 years. And I've spoke before, and my biggest concern has been the water situation. I am one of those with the point, who, when they had the water people come out, they surveyed around the area and everything. And that is a concern of mine. It's stressful. And, you know, I want to be able to flush my toilet. I want to be able to give the dog a drink of water. I want to take a shower. I just, I, I don't know what the answer is to this, but it is a concern along with many of the concerns that Denise has, too. We are a very quiet, nice neighborhood and have been for many years.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard Pelton. I bought the property. I'm kind of curious on where Dickinson's, Danny's entrance is going to be. To the prop, your property's out back there.
That's a matter of between actually two private companies. And it's, the, once an access is agreed to, exactly where it goes, where it ends, and how wide it is, actually becomes part of a private agreement, a real estate agreement between the two people, between the two companies. So you might want to talk to Mr. Dickinson afterwards. All of that could change.
So according to what they propose, they're moving that access road even closest to our properties, closer to properties, if that's what they have proposed. So now there'll be even more traffic closer to our properties.
We don't know what the access road will look like until something comes before us with a proposal for development back there.
And Mr. Pelton, if I can add, the board, due to the wetlands on this site, this is the narrowest point for crossing, and the board have expressed wanting to make sure that the wetlands were the least impacted. But according to the chair, and what you will see is with any development to the rear of this site, you will see a full site plan, and we will go through this process. And that applicant will have to construct this road, and so you will have full site plan review. You'll get to do this again, if you will, if it's approved. And if anything is constructed on that site that falls under the industrial zoning, the light industrial route.
Right now, there is nothing before the planning board concerning that land.
I'm not 100% sure, but ordinances in Scarborough, like construction sites, I work in construction, have all my life. We can't even start work usually till 7 o'clock because of noise. And now you're going to allow this 24/7 noise in residential areas.
Again, that site is light industrial. Is there anyone online? Any hands up? All right, thank you. Public hearing is over. I will make a couple of comments because I took a couple of notes as this went on. Actually, the decisions of the planning board are non precedential, and that is also according to both the Maine Municipal Association and the laws of the state of Maine. I will note that the hydrology, as far as I recall, the well that is going to be drilled by Setzer, and you can just nod your head, you don't need to stand up, see if I'm right, is going to be 30 feet, whereas the drilled, whereas the dug wells of the neighbors are at 10 feet. And according to the report of the hydrologist, hydrogeologist, they're drawing from two separate sources. In other words, one is basically surface water, and the other is down to the bedrock. It's from a different, different source entirely. So, you know, you can shake your head no, all you want. That's the facts. That's the science. That's the science. I'm going to ask Angela to speak about posting on Holmes Road.
I will share, I guess, what I know of it. Obviously, Public Works Department posts roads every year. They had annually been posting, as was pointed out, Holmes Road. That was one of the initial conversations we had with the development team talking about that, the condition and the structural integrity of Holmes Road itself. With that, the Public Works Director and I requested some additional information which I know Doug Howard, our Public Works Director, did also meet with the engineering team at Sabego and there was some evaluation done which maybe Owens could speak to a little more because I was not part of that process. But the outcome from that and the information I got from the Public Works Director was that he was satisfied with the gravel structure under the roadway. After that, as noted also, DOT did some light capital paving through there and you probably noticed all around town, there were segments, a lot of segments of road that were done this past year in preparation for the DOT turning over those roads to the town of Scarborough for jurisdiction. They are now within the urban compact areas of town, which means it falls under the jurisdiction of our local authority, which the Public Works Director obviously oversees for the town. So I guess at this point, a lot of things that used to be in the DOT's hand is now in the local jurisdiction. And so I know there's probably additional questions that come out of that that really is probably best directed through Public Works. But I can try if there's additional or maybe Owens wants to provide a little more information on that evaluation.
Are you reluctant or you want to provide something? No, I give you permission to go up. Reminds me of when I was a teacher.
I'm complying. So I did meet with Doug Howard. We looked at the road between the section that was overlaid and the fact that we agreed for our frontage, which is that dark area that we're going to box cut it, rebuild it, full depth reconstruction in front of the area, widen it for the turn lane between those improvements and the work that was done. That was satisfactory. That met what he would agree to and that's where we ended up. Because originally, we weren't even going to rebuild the front, but we agreed that we would do that.
And I guess I would just add to that is that is that conversation happened knowing that the town of Scarborough would be responsible for Holmes Road and any additional improvements in the future, knowing what we, you know, he went into that conversation knowing that we were in negotiations with DOT to have this handed over to us. So I just point that out. I also wanted to follow up on one other thing that came up that might come into play when we're talking about the width of the right of way for the back parcel. We talked about 50 foot right of way or 60. My understanding from commercial slash industrial, there's collectors, sub collectors and access streets and that's where it kind of starts determining how much traffic is generated from those. Two of those three categories I just mentioned are not allowed to have dead ends. And so I, my understanding from this parcel is that it would be a network of dead end streets, which means that their only really available kind of street categorization would be access street of a commercial industrial, which means that they cannot exceed 2,000 feet. But then I think the 80, the average daily traffic also cannot exceed the 2,000 trips is my understanding. So there's a limitation, I guess, just want to point out. And so I don't know is 60s falls in that category or not if we're, or it needs to stay as like a smaller kind of industrial use.
Once again, that's actually not before us. The access has been provided. That's what the ordinance calls for. The access, the access is there. Once Mr. Dickinson comes forward with a proposal for development, what that road looks like, what that accessway looks like, the amount of, the length of it, the width of it, the direction of it, the wetlands that it covers, all of that becomes part of that discussion. I noticed that Mr. Shanae is, is dancing in his seat and would like to be able to say something. So would you please approach the podium?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Rick Shanae Drummond Woodson, Attorney for the applicant. I just want to clarify, particularly given Mr. Pelton's comments, the site plan that's in your package shows where the now labeled 50 foot strip of land, which will include the right of way is in relation to the site. The only change, Mr. Braun and Mr. Attorney Braun and Mr. Dickinson said, we may need more width in that area. I suspect he's only going to build as much as he has to because building roads is expensive. But all that will change is that 50 foot strip will increase possibly to a maximum of 50, of 60 feet. That's the area within which he will build his right of way if and when he comes back to the board for his project. And of course, as the chair has said, you'll have the opportunity to review that. But that's the only change. We're not moving it anywhere else on the site. It's just increasing the area that's shown on the site plan from 50 to 60 feet. That's really it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now I'm turning this over to the board for comments. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you, Owens, would you clarify for me? You mentioned an eight to 12 foot berm. Is that just because of different areas, you have different sizes planned for and is there any reason you can't do 12 foot everywhere?
The 12 foot, well, we're land restricted too, but the 12 foot was based on the study that said, based on sound waves and mostly it's around the Pelton property where it's the 12 foot. And then as you get sort of back into here where there's more retained wooded area, it dropped down. But we're also planting on top of that. So there'll be a continuous landscape planting on top of it. So 12 feet becomes sets 16, 17 feet growing higher as time goes on and eight feet becomes 12 to 14 feet growing higher as time goes on. So we plan for even higher over time, but the study just required the eight to 12 based on the sound analysis.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a few more questions. This might be better direction towards the town and or the applicant together. Let's see. So related to the secondary curb cut that was mentioned in the public comments, that would be required by the fire department regardless, even if we're trying to minimize curb cuts. Is that generally correct? Like they would want a secondary access case this first one was blocked, say a truck, you know, jackknifed over there?
Correct. That's what they had requested and that curb cut exists. I don't know if I can, I can't share my screen with the applicant's information up, but I can show you that the gate, the gated portion of that access is actually to the parking lot. Maybe you can show where that gate is on that site plan.
It's right here where my hand is.
So the, the curb cut off of Holmes Road is in front of that existing structure and then that would extend back. So the gated portion would still remain logged, only accessible for public safety if they needed access in case of an emergency. It's my understanding.
And I do want to reiterate, because this is a question that's come up before, that curb cut exists. It has been there as part of the, part of the speedway. So while ordinarily, we might take a look and review as to whether a second curb cut was necessary since there was already one there. Just, it was the best place to put the access, the emergency access.
That makes sense. Thank you, Madam Chair and Autumn. There's a suggested condition of approval related to netting to a public sewer within 24 months of that being provided on the adjacent road, which I assume would mean Holmes Road, but potentially would mean Two Rod. Is there any talk, does anybody know that's in the works or planned or is that just like a future proofing kind of item?
Sure. So council discussion is actually going on right now as we speak. Department heads have a meeting with council this Thursday and then council is going into their goal setting this weekend. So it will be based on those discussions and the outcome of that, but it's nothing that has been decided or will be in the very near future. That condition of approval is required by the ordinance. So it's a statement that we will require for all development in this area.
Thank you. And then this might be a naive question, but if public sewer were to be connected, would it be, would it also be able to be bringing public water along that same line or in the same, if you're digging up to build a sewer, wouldn't that be the time to do it?
It's quite possible. It's too soon for me to answer anything along that line.
And just as a reminder, the public water is, is from the Portland Water District. The sewer is the Scarborough Sanitary District. So there are two different organizations involved in putting it in.
But if they're digging up the street to put a pipe in, it seems to me you should got two pipes in. There, I guess, one other thing, one of the public comments is kind of unrelated, but I wanted to just kind of mention it and maybe Autumn can expand on it. Courtney LaRac mentioned that this is kind of unrelated, but there were a bunch of tree cutting going on near her property that really disturbed her and I would just comment that that is being looked at as a potential, potential proposed ordinance that is being worked on to potentially prevent people just randomly clearing a bunch of trees from their property. So I don't know. It's not anything in there yet, but.
No, and I will say that the clearing is going through, per state law, they have a forestry harvesting permit, had conversation with them, Mr. Dickinson, as well as where that happened. So you know, this district requires 100 foot buffer and so it's in his best interest and he is doing that way to make sure that he's not clearing in that area as well. And that conversation is very preliminary and I suspect that that will also have to be fleshed out at those same goal setting conversations to know where.
Absolutely. Yep. Then I had a question and probably this hasn't been brought up yet, it probably doesn't apply for some reason, but recent town council, there was a vote on a moratorium for a light industrial district. I don't know if you want to address that.
Sure. I'd like to, and I'd like to add, help with Ms. Hamilton's question. So the council approved a 90 day moratorium that is set to expire, I believe, March 2018. Thank you. March 18th. There have been, and the moratorium that was approved was approved basically a moratorium on four uses. So it had to do with the trucking, warehousing use that we are contemplating tonight and then three cannabis uses. So the long range planning committee has reviewed the light industrial district for several months now. Couple of Fridays ago, we did review it. Counselor Anderson and Counselor Fellows asked us to zone in, if you will, on those four uses. And so what came out of that long range planning committee is a workshop at the ordinance committee on February 12th between long range and the ordinance committee to further discuss the light industrial district. What Ms. Hamilton is requesting, she had requested interpretation from our legal counsel as to whether if through that conversation and those moratorium actions, if the town were to remove uses or to create new performance standards per se, would they apply retroactively? And what we have received from our counsel is that they, if there is a retroactivity clause, they could apply, but they would only be apply up to 45 days. So if this project was approved tonight, if nothing was in place before March 4th, then it wouldn't apply. And so there are some statutes in the law that protect applicants from getting approval and then councils changing the rules per se, but there's a 45 day limit and the council would have to proactively place a retroactivity clause in any new ordinances for that to even be contemplated. I hope that helps.
A little confusing, but basically it doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from approving or voting on it tonight and it doesn't prevent the applicant from building if they do catch something later.
Right.
Thank you. I think that's all that I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. James?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Owens pointed out, rightfully so, my, my concern has been about the lighting and I appreciate the amount of information and calculations they have provided for us and for the engineers while I appreciate your time. My concern on the lighting is less about, you know, exact foot candles here, exact foot candles there, but the general overall sky glow that big sites are really producing and really impacting these rural areas right now. The comparison to Costco, absolutely. This was, that was before a lighting ordinance came in, so we don't really have the chance to go back and tweak what their site plan is going to be should unless they come back to us in the future. With regard to the rugby pitch down the road on Two Rod, yes, those are, those poles are certainly much taller than the ordinance allows for. They requested a waiver, but they're also shutting their lights off as soon as they're done with their operations for that evening. The, the issue I'm having is and I'm looking, I look back on my notes back in, back in July. In the May 20th meeting, there was no indication to me that this was a 24/7 operation. It was stated that, at least from my, my recollection, that it's Monday, Friday operation and yet the status evolved and more clearly defined as a 24/7 operation as we get to this point. And when this project came before us as a sketch plan, there was no mention, to my recollection, of a 24/7 operation. Given that, I'd like to propose conditions for approval for this should that, should this be approved tonight. And the two of them I have are.
Could you, could you wait on that when we, when we go, get to the draft motion?
Do that.
We'll vote on, vote, we'll enter the draft motion into the record and then you can ask for amendments.
Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my, my concern is the, the 24/7 operation and the sound that's going to be emitting here. I mean, for them to be building an eight to 12 foot berm is intensive. There, there, that's an acknowledgement that there is going to be noise here and very impactful to a rural farm residential space that's here. I would like to see no movement of vehicles to take place in the evening hours between certain periods of time. And during that period of time, if you're not moving vehicles, you don't have to have the lights turned on as much in order to be aware of vehicles backing in and around that site. Because we remember on the earlier discussions of the need to have lights on 24/7 is for folks to be moving vehicles in and around that space. But if they're not moving vehicles that late at night, they can afford to have much lower light levels and decrease the amount of sky glow that's going to be produced in that area by having those lights on at night. The only other comments that I have is I'm not, I'm still concerned about traffic. As mentioned, we just still, we just approved the Roma Joes. That's going to be down on Payne Road. There's going to be more impacts, the traffic in this area and the congestion that's at the Holmes Road and Payne Road intersection. And I'm still, I'm still struggling to reconcile all this information here and make sure that there is enough to make sure that those issues are being addressed for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a, hello? Do you have a comment about the lighting at night?
I'm.
And, you know, and the level of the security lighting.
That's more of an operational item and I think Isaac needs to speak to that and maybe FedEx directly. So I'm going to, if, with your permission, I'll let Isaac come up and speak to that.
So the comment on lowering the light level at night and you're, you're talking apples and oranges, right? So you're talking about operationally being able to reduce the light level. However, the requirements, suggested requirements from the IESNA, from a security standpoint, goes from having uniform light levels. You start dimming down lower pole levels, you end up with splotchy light in, in your sight, then causing actually higher glare because glare is caused by light and dark areas, not a high level of light. So when you look at it from a security aspect, you actually increase your ability, sorry, you decrease your ability to keep your site secure because you have dark areas. It's like if you have a flashlight, where you're shining the flashlight, you can see, but the dark areas around it, you cannot. but the dark areas around it, you cannot. So the IESNA, which is the guidelines that you pointed us to, the way that they define security lighting and the approach to it is much more uniform light. Now, dialing back to the July comments of pole levels, if we raise the poles, similar to Costco, similar to rugby, we can actually lower the light level, but have a better spread of light and have a uniform light level to increase the security level, but reduce the total light level in the space. So unfortunately, we can't have all of these things. They work against each other. And you've designed side lighting, you've explained that. What would the approach be then? Because when you're at a 15-foot and a 20-foot pole level, when you start reducing that light level, the lighting in between those poles becomes dark. When it becomes dark, the security cameras and human eye security, like just somebody observing, can no longer see in those dark spots. So now you cause a security hazard and a safety hazard if there was an emergency. So what, what would be your recommendation as far as direction?
Sorry for me to answer. I guess my recommendation is, and I appreciate your answer. Thank you. The, my recommendation would be is, when we're looking back on the need to have this lighting on 24/7, is the need to be backing up vehicles and for security, I understand that, but your perceived level of brightness is much higher with the newer LED technology that's out here. It's not like the high-pressure sodium metal halide that we had 10, 15 years ago, where, you know, you do have these just blobs of light that's sort of put all over the place that the, and I understand you're, you have security guidelines, you have your recommended practices for securing your facilities, but you're in the middle of a rural farm zone here. There isn't anything around here. You're not next to an urban area where you're going to have sort of roaming gangs of people that are going to come in and try to break into the facility. It's a very low-key, quiet space, and we're trying to keep it that way. I, I would still say, I would still argue that you still can dim your lights down by a certain percentage in order to safely have someone patrol the facility, that one person that's going to be there at night. But the movement of vehicles is something that I'm, I'm not going to budge on. I think having vehicles moving at night does necessitate having higher light levels. But if you're not moving vehicles at night, you're not moving vehicles that generate noise, then you don't have to have those higher light levels needed in order to make it safe to be backing those vehicles around.
So, Rick, and you opened up another discussion, not just from a security safety standpoint, but from a physical safety standpoint and OSHA guidelines. Just out here in your old parking lot, there's slippery spots, right? Walking around, security guard walks, slips, falls in dark space and is not seen. IESNA and actually NEC, almost any electrical guideline or code falls default to OSHA, says from a safety aspect, all guidelines, all requirements are off the table if it's safety and security both, but safety in particular, we no longer apply our guidelines. So from a physical safety standpoint, and in the instance where emergency personnel have to be there on site or something along those lines, having a well-uniformed site is, is a necessity. And as far as the, the, the intensity that you're, that you've referred to, the recommendation to go from 5,000 Kelvin lighting color temperature down to 3,000 Kelvin, which is more of a residential, in-your-home sort of light level, which, there, there are sites, you know, all over the place that do utilize that. Most of the lighting around Scarborough was not that level, is not 3,000 Kelvin. When you go to 3,000 Kelvin, it is a warmer light. That intensity goes away, which is the reason I'm assuming you guys added it to the lighting requirement. So by utilizing that 3,000 Kelvin technology eliminates that worry that you're concerned with, and that's why you guys added it to it, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes. I guess my, 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 my point here is that I don't want to go into what a case-by-case would be if somebody were to be out there and slip and fall and they can't get up and they can't call for help, if they don't have a radio or if they don't have a cellphone or if they're knocked unconscious, I'm not going to.
We as engineers, we plan for the worst, right?
No, I understand.
We have to. That's, that's what our licenses are for.
I, I.
Okay, I, I think, I think, I, I think we have two people who know an awful lot about lighting and some of the rest of us who are saying, I, I don't know. I, so that, I, I think we will let the draft motion stand on the lighting until or unless an amendment comes through. I don't want to renegotiate all of the lighting. I don't want to renegotiate the hours. So let's, let's, I really appreciate the discussion, and it was fascinating, and I have no idea. So, thank you. I appreciate, James, your, your dogged determination there, but that's the sort of thing that engineers discuss over a beer someplace else.
If, I guess, if, if I could add just that one final thought on that, Madam Chair, there are instances where you can throw a switch and have all the lights turn on at 100%, shouldn't an emergency happen, should fire line need to come in there? And that's a simple programming item that can be incorporated to a building design. So it's not like to be impossible to turn the monitor off in the middle of the night. But thank you for the conversation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Roger to go next.
Well, first, I, I want to thank the residents for their participation. I know this is very important to them, and I do, I do appreciate all their comments and their concerns. Having said that, we, we've, we've been presented with this project, and we've had numerous meetings, as, as, as it's been stated, and everything, every, every concern that both the board and the residents have come up with or have expressed, I believe the applicant has satisfied those concerns and, and requests. And whether we're talking about lighting, or traffic, or water, or sound, or landscaping. Traffic was a big concern, especially at the intersection, and I think it's, it's going to continue to be a concern until the town, the town's going to have to deal with that whole Payne Road, Holmes Road area, because it's obviously, there's changes occurring right there. So I don't know. I mean, this is a business that does have to operate, and they have an operating schedule. I mean, so I, I think, I, I don't really have anything more to say other than I, I don't know what else we can ask them to do. I mean, this has been going on for quite a long time, and this is a business that, that can operate in this particular zone at this time. So I, I think they've, they've satisfied everybody's concerns at this point. So I really don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Rick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of the most vetted projects I think I've had in my five-year tenure. And I remember when this was brought to us at a sketch plan, and I looked at many of you in the eye, and I said, "I promise I will hold the developer to task to follow what has been laid out in our ordinances and then some." We recently received their DEP permit, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. It's 25 pages long, and it put me to sleep several times. So you're going to bear with me here for a minute. I'm going to read some of what this DEP permit allows in some basic concept. And I do have to acknowledge the effort of Owen in your letter. I think I was the one that wanted it out in writing exactly what we put you to. And what did the state put you to? Well, they put you with the noise. And you had stated that this was going to have some noise impact. And because the town does not quali, we don't contain any quantifiable noise standards, the Good Neighbor Ordinance doesn't apply. The bottom line is that a noise study was conducted on March 20th and concluded that the facility, as originally designed, would require no, no noise control measures to comply with applicable limits, and those are defined at 7 dB during daytime and 60 dB at night. If you really want to fall asleep by, by now, go ahead. You have done due diligence in creating vegetated berms, the height of, of these berms, the tree plantings. The bottom line is, the department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions for the control of excessive environmental noise from the proposed projects, provided the applicant adheres to the noise standards that belong with the state. When it comes to scenic character, the applicant has proposed to maintain the surrounding scenic character by maintaining a dual-purpose vegetated berm to buffer the development and adjacent residential structures. Based on the project's location and design, the department finds, and this is the DEP, not Scarborough's Planning Department, finds that the proposed project will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the scenic character of the surrounding area. Wildlife and fisheries even came in and said, "The department finds the applicant has made adequate provisions for the protection of wildlife and fisheries." Unusual natural areas, the Maine National Area Program database does not contain any records documenting anything rare in this parcel. The department finds that the proposed development will not have an adverse effect on the preservation of unused natural areas either on or near the development site. Buffer strips, the department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions for buffer strips. We won't even get into the soil because there's so much here I don't even understand. But the bottom line is, the department finds that based on this report and the BLR, which I highlighted that being, just for the record, Bureau of Land Resources. I didn't know that. So that was a learning for me. But the department finds, based on the report and the BLR review, the soils on this projected site presents no limitations to the proposed projects that cannot be overcome through standard engineering practices. And I'm just reading some excerpt, excerpts. Housekeeping, based on the BLR's review of erosion and sedimentation control plan and the maintenance plan, the department finds that the proposed project meets the basic standards contained in the chapter, provided that the applicant submits a signed maintenance contract for the upkeep of the proposed chorus pavement as described. We will hold you to that. Based on the stormwater systems design and the BLR review, the department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions to ensure that the proposed project will meet the general standards contained in the chapter, provided that the construction is overseen, inspected, reported, and as built or submitted as described abut, and we will hold them to that. Based on this system design, the department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions to ensure that the proposed project will meet the flooding standard contained in the chapter from the project site and the channel limits and runoff area. Groundwater, the department finds that the proposed project will not unreasonably deplete groundwater resources. Therefore, the department further finds that the proposed project will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on groundwater quality, provided that a copy of the above, above-ground tank permit from the state fire marshals and is submitted. So we will hold you to that. Water supply, when completed, the project is anticipated to use approximately 2,000 gallons of water today, per day. The department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions for securing and maintaining a sufficient and helpful, helpful water supply, provided that the, prior to occupancy, the applicant submits the approval for the well-location and associated conditions. We will hold you to that. Based on the BLR comments, the department finds that the proposed wastewater disposal system will be built on suitable soil types, provided the applicant provide a copy of the approval form. You probably know about that, but we're going to hold you to that. And I'm almost done. Based, we're, we're now down to solid waste. Based on the department, based on the above information, the department finds that the applicant has made adequate provisions for solid waste disposal, provided that the applicant provides a copy of the VRAP approval for reuse of the soil to the, to the BLR. We will hold you to that. Air quality, the department finds that the proposed project will have no unreasonable adverse effect on air quality. And I think that, by then I was on my fourth beer, so I stopped reading. So in short, as I promised, we were going to put this applicant through the wringer to ensure that it will do no harm. And any development in, in any situation will do harm to something or somebody, and that's just what happens with development. We've done, I feel, that I have done my due diligence in educating myself on this project, making informed decisions, asking questions. And so at this point, I am ready to move forward and give the floor back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I hardly know what to say after that, but I, I do agree that the applicant has done what we've asked him to do. We started with a project that I think had flaws that needed change, and as we worked through it, the project was changed through conversations, through input from the neighbors, conversations with the, with our, our consultants, conversations with the planning department, conversations with the planning board and the things that we have requested. I think we are at the end of what we can ask. I think from my perspective, FedEx has satisfied all that we have asked it to satisfy. I, I appreciate what was helpful, was the, was the summary that we received that showed us what was left. I did have a couple of questions. I think they were relatively minor, and I'm not even going to ask them, you know, unless you would like me to, but I, I wouldn't ask me to, so just, let's move on. So saying that, I do have a draft motion. I understand that there will be amendments or that a member of the planning board will propose amendments. I will go through the draft motion, have it seconded, and then we will hear the amendments, the proposed amendments. They must be seconded. This is complicated enough, so what I'm going to do is vote on the amendment, the amendments separately. If they pass, they are included into the draft motion. If they do not pass, they are not included. And this is a long. Do I have, do I have anything written? Oh, yes, we do. Oh, yes, we do. Yeah, just in case. Okay. I move to approve the FedEx Freight Site Plan proposed by Sets of Properties LLC. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by Sabago Technics dated 8/19/2024. The application is approved with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings, the project will include construction of a 30,560 square-foot warehouse, 5,818 square-foot office space, and 11,705 square-foot maintenance shop as part of a distribution center at 70 Holmes Road. This approval is in accordance with the approved master plan, also approved by the planning board on December 11th, 2023. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances, including provision of access to the adjacent site, and with following waivers and conditions. Waivers, number one, Site Plan Review Ordinance, Section 4C1, to permit a driveway width of 44 feet where the ordinance requires a 26- to 30-foot driveway width for projects that have between 10 to 15 truck trips per hour. Conditions, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting. A, provide estimate for off-site performance guarantee once design is finalized. Full design must be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to building permits. B, meet the requirements for traffic mitigation as outlined in the supplemental traffic letter dated 10/11/2024. C, record declaration of, record declaration of restrictions prior to scheduling pre-construction meeting for the project. D, update fire cistern tank design to be based on the NFPA 101 2018 edition. E, add a note to the site plan. The owner or developer agrees to connect to public sewer system within 24 months of sewer being provided, of services being provided in the adjacent street. F, address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated 9/3/2024. Nine, excuse me, G, address planning board comments discussed at the 1/21/25 meeting. This includes one, update the site plan to accommodate 60-foot access easement and update dedication to allow 60-foot crossing. H, provide the final full plan set to the planning department. This shall include all site and civil plans, landscape plans, lighting plans, and architectural renderings and elevations. I, the applicant shall execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix 1 of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter 419 Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. J, payment of the Chapter 419 Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and reporting fee, total $750. K, payment of all review fees and invoices. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, provide designs for all off-site improvements. Full design must be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to building permits. B, provide a performance guarantee for 150% of the value of the work for all off-site improvements prior to issuance of the building permit. C, pay impact fees totaling $103,804. Payne Road Zone 5, $2,049.4. Payne Road, Gin Road, 62,356. Payne Road None Such River, $28,660. Oak Hill, $755. Dunston Corner, $7,010. Higgins Parkway Route 1, $2,970. D, pay the additional contribution of $250,000 for future intersection improvements at the Payne and Holmes Road intersection. Three, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall, A, complete all off-site improvements to the satisfaction of Main DOT and Town of Scarborough. B, submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervise the plan and facilities' construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan, and that they will function as intended by said plan. C, provide an as-built plan for the site, including survey elevations of the new swale. This shall confirm the swale was built to plan and function as intended. I'm sorry, I strike number C. Okay. Darin, please, please note that when you're working on this. C becomes instead, request an inspection by the planning department to ensure compliance with this planning board approval. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Rick Meinke. Are there changes or are there amendments to come forward?
If I may, Madam Chair.
James?
I amend, no movement of vehicles are permitted to take place between the hours of 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, seven days a week.
Is there a second? Motion fails for no second. All right, thank you. No additional amendments? Okay, Darin, please call the roll.
Rachel Henrickson?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Roger Bealy?
Yes.
No.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Thank you. At long last, this has passed. I'm now going to take a five-minute break. I used that clock there to determine the five minutes. Meeting will come to order. Item 4.05 BH2M, on behalf of Owen Baxter, O's Enterprises, is requesting site plan review for a 6,800-square-foot building that will house two service businesses at 6 Cummings Road, Assessors Map R037 Lot 60. For the town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that has been before you as a sketch plan in October of 2023, and then again as a site plan this past April in 2024. They have received their DEP permit, so at this time, we are hoping to move this forward. They do have a waiver that staff has requested. It has to do with snow storage areas, specifically for the eastern boundary of the site. At your last review on April, we talked about using frosted glass for the roll-up doors. Those roll-up doors are facing the street. They have proposed that. And we have a couple of questions about parking and landscaping. Their site is quite constrained. We do have in our staff memo a recommendation to strip this space along this area. Normally, if you all propose to reduce the amount of parking, and you can in your purview, we would use it as landscaped area, but so that they do not have to go back through DEP to do that. I've proposed that they stripe it. I think it will have the same effect, and it won't make any changes, but it would create a safer situation, I believe. As far as that, we do, I've touched on the snow storage area. We also have discussed with them about the addition of a split-rail fence or a guardrail along the wetlands setback in this area. We don't want to see the snow storage area back here as it would go down the grade into the wetlands, and so we've talked to them about that condition. And we've also have cleared up that the red brick watershed fees do go to the town and not DEP. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, and for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Austin Fagan with BH2M here representing Owen Baxter of O's Main. Thank you for that introduction, Autumn. Pretty much took all my bullet points, so I don't have much left. So this is a proposed contractor duplex business at 6 Cummings Road. As Autumn said, the project was last seen by the board on April 16th of 2024, where we talked about things such as using the frosted glass garage doors, shielding lighting fixtures, which notes have been added to the plans for that, and removal of the existing home on-site for what that should be filled with and what should be done with the materials. I know it has been added to the site plan for that. We have received approvals from the DEP for a stormwater permit as well as wetland impacts and RPA, and we have received Army Corps permitting for a main general permit. We have received additional comments from town staff and the third-party review engineer, which we discussed at the design review committee meeting on the 8th of this month. It seems that everything left in those comments is somewhat superficial, something that can be dealt with with minor plan changes to the approval of staff. Let's see. As Autumn stated, there was a recommendation for a request of snow storage on the site. We have put together a snow removal plan that was submitted with the last set of revisions for the property. And with all of that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. This is available for public comment. Is there any member of the public in the room who would care to comment? Or anybody who is online? Okay, no one is online. No one has jumped up and raced to the podium. Public comment period is over. I'll turn this over to the board in no particular order. Okay, James?
The only comment I have with regard to the lighting drawing, it's on Sheet 4, the pole-mounted light fixture S3 and S3-BLC and S4. It looks like the 4,000 K and 70 CRI options are highlighted within the cut sheet. I just want to make sure that we're verifying that all the fixtures are going to be 3,000 K, 80 CRI.
Yes, I will double-check on that, make sure that everything's highlighted correctly.
Cool.
So it is, sorry, come again, 2,000 K or 3,000 K and 80 CRI?
Yeah, yeah. If you have them reference the lighting ordinance, it should have it all there. And that just needs to be spelt out clearly in a light fixture schedule
on the drawings, rather than just have the blank cut sheets there.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Other comments? Ben?
I'm just looking my way, so I don't have a lot, really. I think we've seen this a couple of times, and I'm, you know, in favor of the snow storage waiver request. I think generally, if you're comfortable being able to meet the Haley Ward memo comments that, you know, mostly are addressed anyway, but a couple, they had a couple minor details about. I think that I'm comfortable at this point with the project, so that's where I stand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just for the record, then, you're okay with removing the first parking spot to the right and reserve it for future?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The board is content with that, we are as well.
And you'll update the storage, snow storage areas on the plan? And you can have that pile removed within five calendar days?
Absolutely.
You stand ready to do a wooden guardrail or split rail fence?
Yes.
As outlined?
Yes, a split rail fence.
And reverse the location of pins and signage every 50 feet and signs should be every 100 feet?
Correct.
And you're willing to pay the Red Brook Watershed fees to the town?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have one thing that I think you may have addressed the last time and my memory is failing. But I had a question on the traffic flow around the building. The front of the building has two-way traffic and the rear of the, then the rest of the building has one-way traffic.
Yes.
So how do people get? How do the people who are coming in and going to the left, how do those cars get out? Do they turn around in the drive area?
So those are intended for use with the garage doors at the front of the site for getting work vehicles in and out if they, they need to get in that way. The intended circulation is around the building in a counterclockwise direction. We don't anticipate there being a significant amount of people that'll be unfamiliar with the site, where it is two contractor businesses, mostly people that work there will be on the site. And any opportunity where someone were to go the wrong direction, they could back in out front of the doors and turn around as long as they're in a reasonably sized vehicle.
All right, thank you. I was, I was sure there was a reasonable response to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have seen this. I liked the doors. I liked the building design when you first showed it to us. I think it's, uh, I think it's a good fit for the area. I have no further questions. Thank you. Board has no questions? I, I've been watching Roger and he does not have his hand up.
No, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have a draft motion. I move to approve the project titled. Your handwriting is as bad as Eric's was sometimes. Okay, I move to approve the project titled O's Main, proposed by Owen Baxter. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by BH2M dated 2/16/2024. The application is approved with the following findings, waivers and conditions. Findings: The project will include construction of a 6,800 square foot commercial building at 6 Cummings Road. The project will involve relocation of the existing single-family home off-site and new construction for office space for O's Main Contractor Business and an additional commercial tenant space. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following waivers and conditions. Waivers: One, site plan review ordinance section 4B19G permits a waiver to the required snow storage areas specifically for the western boundary of the site. Conditions: One, remove the first parking space to the right upon entering the site and reserve as a future potential parking space with landscape or striping provided. Two, update the snow storage areas on the plan set to remove the area along the eastern parking lot and update the snow storage management plan to include the following: A, interim snow storage shall be removed within five calendar days following a storm cycle. Three, include wooden guardrail or split rail fence along the eastern parking lot boundary to protect vehicles from the grade change as well as prevent snow removal in the area adjacent to the wetlands. Four, reverse the location of pins and signage. Pins should be every 50 feet and signs should be every 100 feet. Five, pay Red Brook Watershed fees to town prior to building permit. Six, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting. A, address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated 1/9/2025. B, address planning board comments discussed in the 1/21/25 meeting. This includes: One, all lighting is to be 3,000 K, 80 CRI. C, provide the final full plan set to the planning department. This shall include all site and civil plans, landscape plans, lighting plans and architectural renderings and elevations. D, the applicant shall execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in appendix one of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter 419 Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. E, payment of the Chapter 419 Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and reporting fee total $750. F, payment of all review fees and invoices. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Seven, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall: A, pay impact fees totaling $2,628.95. Paying road zone one, $1,046.01. Paying road zone two, $584.84. Paying roads zone three, $998.10. Eight, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall: A, submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan and facilities, construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan and that they will function as intended by said plan. B, request an inspection by the planning department to ensure compliance with the planning board approval. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick Meinke. Seeing nobody jumping up, Dorian, please call the roll.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
BH200?
Yes.
James Seibert?
Yes.
Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
And Roger Beely?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
It passes. Item 4.06 M&amp;R Holdings LLC. On behalf of Crossroads Holdings LLC, requesting master plan amendment review for the Town Center, Scarborough Downs Road, assessors map R052 lot four. For the town, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very similar to a request you all heard in November. At that time, the applicant had requested the core area be larger to include the proposed site for the grocery store. And so at that time, you all asked them to remove that. They have come back in, they have reduced the core area to an 18 acre area, and they are requesting that the impervious be increased to 90% for this specific location. Staff doesn't have any comments and I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. The applicant who is here as well?
Thank you. Dan Bacon here on behalf of Crossroads Holdings LLC. I do have a couple of slides to share. Not enabling me, no. It did? It's not. Okay, little delay. Yep, thanks. So as Autumn introduced, we were before you back in November. We are looking at a larger area of Town Center master plan to, to allow for a 90% impervious cover. And, okay, I'm going to share now, so we have something to look at. And the board feedback was that you were supportive of the concept, but wanted us to remove the grocery and the grocery site. So we've gone back, working with staff and reduced the 90% coverage area to a more limited area from 26 acres to 18 acres from a master plan standpoint. Just bring up that slide. This is the area. It's outlined in purple, so the, the grocery area would have been the larger area that's kind of to the plan south of the purple area. So we've made those updates. In terms of the specifics as to why we need it in the central core area, it's really critical from a design standpoint in a long Downs Road in our central square to allow a slightly higher impervious cover for the plaza areas that we're planning for outdoor dining and seating, the brighter, broader sidewalks you expect along the retail restaurant storefrontage, the whole programming of the Central Green, which will include a lot of outdoor dining. Buildings are sited close together, so they're adjacent, they're walkable, the shared street woo nerf that we've talked to the board about earlier in the fall, and the general kind of compact nature of this limited area. So at this point, we're hopeful that based on your feedback in November, you'd be supportive of this more limited spot in Town Center. From an overall standpoint, it's about 11% of the Town Center district. That would go from the 85% to 90% coverage. And I think you've seen some of these images. I just wanted to share, this one kind of captures, it's a bird's eye of the general vicinity that in the foreground that we're talking about, those design elements that we're working on right now to come to you at future meetings for sketch plan and site plan. And we just want to solidify this allowance so we can proceed further with our design approach in this kind of critical part of the Town Center project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Is there any member of the public in the room who would care to comment? Is there anyone online? Period. No, so there will be no comments coming from online. I declare public comment period over. I'm going to turn this over to the board in no particular order. Who would like to go or say? Rick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe I was supportive of the last time we saw something of this nature. And the reason why I was supportive of it is because the 75% ratio will stay intact through the entire plan development. And that is going to be true here as well, correct?
That is, yep.
Then I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the board? Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I remember when we did this in November, I think it was, there was a bunch of waffling back and forth among the board about adjusting provisions here or there, but now with the grocery area removed, I don't think that adjustment that we've been discussing then would be necessary anymore about which ratios count and everything. It gets clearer now to everyone involved, what's being discussed, and I am supportive of this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. James?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Roger's hand up after James.
The Central Green Turf Plaza is the central, is the big green spaces. Are you proposing that to be turf?
We're, we're considering it, yeah, for maintenance reasons, for the amount of use we expect to see on that space. And most projects like this, they go with a artificial surface so that it stays green. It doesn't get rutted, it doesn't become a liability from a use standpoint. So that's, that's the direction we're headed and we'll certainly come back to the board with details as part of any site plan review in the future.
Okay, I guess I'd like, when we get into that, like to see more detail on, on that. Does, forgive me, does turf cart count as impervious surface? Thank you, okay, that's, that's what I thought.
What was the answer? Just a nod of a head there.
Yes, it would count towards that. That's one of the reasons for this request.
Thank you.
Impervious.
Thank you.
And how large is the green space planning to be? I know I asked it before for the woo nerf, like how large are we planning for this?
I think turf itself or the green itself is around 20,000 square feet, but there's a lot of plaza around it, as you can see in the image. And so I think overall, that's closer to an acre, you know, within the confines of those four buildings that you can see.
Yep.
So it's not just turf, obviously. It's like plaza area, walking area, dining, a potential stage.
And per the conceptual, the concept image we have up there, there will be trees lined along the street side?
Yeah. Yeah, we still have street trees along the woo nerf, around the turf, and we'll get into landscape planning with the board certainly, and want it to be, have shade, you know, and have a nice experience. It's more about kind of the ground plane, making sure we have the outdoor dining, making sure we have kind of the turf area and that we can design something like this within the ordinance allowances.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Roger?
Thank you. I, I support this. I, I think it's pretty exciting. And I just have a couple of questions for Dan. I just, I went on the, on you, on the Downs website and I was looking at the different photographs and there's one that's actually a video. And is that, that video shows vehicles coming in on Market Street towards this, this area right here? Is that, is that video an up-to-date video that reflects the thoughts of the consultants that you've recently hired?
Well, there's a couple of videos online, so there's one that is a little dated and then there's one that is entirely up-to-date that shows different views of what you're looking at here, Roger. So I think the answer is yes in terms of the video. I, I can check it after the meeting as well and give, send you a note.
Well, well, it's, it's, the one I saw is very impressive and it shows, you know, the, all the gathering areas and the buildings up close. It's sort of an, an urban feel to it, which I think is what would, what you're trying to find here, what you're trying to achieve. And I, I just think it's very, you know, it's, it's, I wish more people would take a look at it, more townspeople would take a look at it to, to get a better idea of what you're, what you're trying to achieve here. And the only last comment, last question I would have is on the turf, the turf portion there, would, would that have any ability to be used for ice skating in the winter?
We're thinking about four-season programming, so I think there's certainly a possibility. We want it to be multipurpose.
Yeah.
So that the use vary over the course of the year and in some cases over the course of months. So we're, we're kind of, kind of considering everything, Roger.
I mean, that, that would be, I mean, in the wintertime, that'd be a great gathering area, you know? So, no, I, I support this. I, I'm very excited at this portion of what's happening right now and I'm looking forward to see how it progresses. Thank you.
One other thing online too that we have is what they call photo spheres, where you actually pick a point and then you can do a 360. So maybe that's what you're referring to, Roger, where there's a handful of views that they've done that, where you can be in the green and then turn around 360 and get a sense of the feel. And well, as we get into review with the board, we can provide more of those as you think, look at site plans in the future.
Yeah, and I, I wish somehow the, the public would take an opportunity and, and take a look at this too, because this, this is what the town has been looking for for decades, this here. And not more, not necessarily more housing developments, but a downtown, you know, a sort of a town center. And this is exactly, I think, what they're looking for. And I wish more people would avail themselves to, to taking a look at that, to video and everything and any other photos. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the effort that you made to accede to our, our concerns. As I said at the last meeting, I can understand the 90% for the area that surrounds the woo nerf, which should be the name of that street, you know, as you go along to name it, the Downs Woo Nerf. Downs Woo Nerf. And then somebody has to explain that to most of the people who come into the area. But I think, I think it works. I always get a little reluctant to cover more, more ground with more impermeable area. But I think, given the total amount of permeable and open space areas in the, in the project, that I can live with the 90% coverage in the town center area there, so I also support this. I have a draft motion, if nobody else wants to jump up and down. I move to approve the project titled "The Downs Town Center Master Plan Amendment," proposed by Crossroads Holdings LLC. The project is depicted in application materials dated 12/12/24. Findings: This proposal amends the existing town center master plan at the Downs by increasing the maximum impervious for the area, maximum impervious coverage for the 18-acre town center core area to 90% rather than 85%. The provision is that no greater than an overall 75% ratio within the planned development district land area shall remain. The amendment also corrects the total acreage in the town center district for 100, to 160 acres. Do I have a second?
Good.
That was Ben, thank you. Doreen, Ben was fast. Doreen, call the roll, please.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Henrickson? James Hebert?
Yes.
Kenneth Flanders?
Yes.
And Roger Bailey.
Roger?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Passes.
Good job. Nine of 10.
Item 4.07, Sibego Technics, on behalf of NLM Enterprises LLC, is requesting sketch plan review for a conservation subdivision located at 19 Elmwood Avenue to create a total of 27 single-family house lots. Assessors map R057 Lot 3. For the town, please.
Connection to the zoo.
Right, we're on a roll.
Technology.
Technology errors.
Go ahead and introduce the item. This is a sketch plan for Elmwood Avenue subdivision. It is on Leighton Farm Road, and they are proposing 27 single-family home lots. They, this is the site where the existing cell tower is located. And so they are proposing, there would be two phases in this subdivision. And the first phase, you would have 100-foot fall zone around, do you have it? Got it. Perfect. So I just can't read that far. So the first phase would have the fall zone around the cell tower, and then the second phase, when the cell tower lease was over, they would build that out as well. So we can go to the subdivision plan. And then, again, this is a sketch plan. At this point, we don't have a lot of comments. This is a conservation subdivision, and the applicant, go ahead and share anything additional, and then maybe we can answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Taylor with Sibego Technics, representing the applicant, NLM Enterprises. This is a conservation subdivision on a 16.8-acre site, so we are trying to provide, you know, greater than 50% open space, which would be reserved and, you know, kind of protected open space with the 27 lots proposed for the site, as that would be part of Phase Two. The Phase One is 22 lots. There's three towers that are currently on the site right now. Two of those towers, the two tallest ones, there, there are radio towers with flashing lights. Those would be removed before the subdivision was constructed. There'd be one remaining tower, which is a cellphone tower, it's the shortest tower, no lights associated with it, but there is a building around it that would be remaining to stay. And as Autumn mentioned, the lots are set up for Phase One such that there's a fall zone, if the tower fell down, it wouldn't, it would stay on that lot that is to remain, it wouldn't impact the road either. And then that tower has a lease, and that gets kind of negotiated, so when that lease is up and the tower, the cellphone tower and the cellphone company kind of moves off of it, we'd come back, propose to infill the inside of this loop road with the six additional lots to kind of fill out this subdivision. We've got water proposed, public water, which is coming from Leighton Farms Road, as well as a sewer connection to Leighton Farms Road. It's likely that these lots will have individual, individual pumps going to a low-pressure sewer that would then connect to the gravity sewer in Leighton Farms Road. There is a little, a small amount of wetland impact being showed on this layout associated with the road construction. And that's kind of the, we've tried to minimize that as much as possible and avoid the wetlands. But with that wetland impact, to avoid that wetland impact would result in significant number of lots getting kind of reduced, or a additional road length being added in the form of a dead-end road, something like that. So we've tried to create a loop road for this while minimizing the amount of impact and conserving that open space available. That's all I've got, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This item is available for public comment. Is there any member of the public in the room or online that would care to comment?
I have no one online for this item.
And I assume the other people in this room are part of this project. In that case, public, the public comment period is over. Turn this over to the board with a reminder, this is a sketch plan. What we do try to, try to do in a sketch plan is provide guidance to the applicant on those areas that we will probably really want to take a look at as they go along, so that that provides them with a heads-up and some guidance that they can work with the planning department on. So with no particular order, who would like to go? James?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just with regard to the green spaces, the open space, it looks like that's just limited to behind each of the homes. Is there, are there any communal green open spaces that's sort of meant to be shared by the homes that are all in here? I see they're all pretty, really close together. Is there anything planned for sort of a communal space, open space that everyone can enjoy together?
Well, I guess the open space was planned as a more passive space and not a, an active recreation space. But yes, this is a, you know, it is a conservation subdivision, so that does allow the tighter, smaller lots and less frontage and that sort of thing. So it was intended to kind of keep everything tight together such that you do have the large continuous open space kind of around the outside of the subdivision.
Okay, I guess my, my thought is, if you have families moving into these homes, you know, where are the, where are the kids going to go? I guess they go in the backyard, they go out into the woods behind, is that what the intent of it is?
I mean, yeah, some, some families could use it that way. There's certainly, you know, front yards too that can be, can be utilized, and plenty of neighborhood activities that can be kind of between lots and that sort of thing.
Okay. I guess going forward, I'd love to try to see what, if there is some kind of communal space aspect we can incorporate, especially for some of these lots that are only .18 acres or .17 acres for, for a bit of little space like Lot 10. But those are just my initial thoughts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, echoing James's comments on that, I would also be interested in seeing if you could explore the options of a communal space somewhere. Maybe you move some lots, or maybe you remove one lot for a communal, you know, I don't know, whether it's a gazebo or a playground or something. I also kind of curious about the cellphone tower that's going to be remaining, you have like maybe six, six houses or something that would still, that would not be built in Phase One, is that the idea, right in the middle there?
That's correct, yeah.
So people are building houses kind of surrounding this cellphone tower. Is that going to be problematic for any kind of maintenance and/or taking down of the cellphone tower, having a neighborhood kind of fully surrounding it?
Well, there'd be good road access to it, to, in order to take that down, and there is quite a bit of land on those six lots, that, so that tower could actually be fully laid down. Or if it, you know, unfortunately would default down, it doesn't come into the road, it doesn't go on anyone's property, it falls in that, on that lot that's going to be further subdivided once that is removed.
Yep. Okay. So am I correct that the applicant, does the applicant currently own this property, or do they, are they planning to develop it for someone else? I guess my question is about the lease, really. The long-term is like, who holds the lease for the cellphone tower? How long are you going to have a cellphone tower in the middle of the subdivision versus?
Well, the landowner does have the, my understanding is the landowner has the, holds the lease, and that there's a, there's a purchase and sales agreement for, for the lot, for the developer to purchase the land.
Okay. And that would include the lease? So then at that, if they were to be sold, then the developer would control the lease, and they don't control it until then? Is that the, that's basically?
My understanding is that the, the cellphone company basically has the lease, and they, it's their, they can have the, they can choose to terminate it early. I guess it's on a five-year period.
Okay. And after that five years, either party could choose to not renew it? I don't know. But maybe it's not my business, I just was curious about how long you might have a cellphone tower in the middle of a subdivision, but that's really what I'm getting at. Okay. I guess that's not really here nor there. I think if you work with town staff, you know, this was like a reasonable place for subdivision to me. Hoping that it doesn't impact my cell service, because I live somewhere near here. But, you know, sounds good. Thanks.
I also live nearby and over in South Portland, but I hope it doesn't impact my cell service as well, so I can appreciate that.
Thank you. Someone else? Roger?
Oh.
Yeah, Roger's got his hand up there.
Yeah. This is a Mayetta development, correct?
Yeah, the, the applicant is NLM Enterprises, which is.
But it's going to be, okay, which is similar to, what's the name of this property? Oh, Leighton Farms, right next door. Now, are the lot sizes very similar to the lot sizes on Leighton, in Leighton Farms?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I would say, as long as, I, I have, I have no problem with what you're doing, the layout and everything. It would be nice if there was some areas where, because, because I suspect there's a lot of families living at Leighton Farms, and there'll probably be a lot of families living here, if there was someplace where kids could gather and just, you know, play, play baseball or football or whatever, you know, just play around, just have a place to play around. Anyways, and I would just recommend you take a look at the peer reviewers' comments, make sure you're guided by them, and otherwise, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Minkin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo the comments from my colleagues. Just, just out of curiosity, why are you choosing a Leighton Farms Road as the point of entry and not Elmwood Avenue?
There, there is a, a wetland system that kind of separates Elmwood and the majority of the, of the property, upland property. And so coming off of Leighton Farms Road doesn't require a wetland crossing, but Elmwood Ave would.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, knowing that this is a sketch plan and we'll see, see it come, I think this is good use of this area. I, you know, without sidewalks, people don't tend to move around within the development. So I'd like to see where and how we could do some interconnectivity between these other neighborhoods and this neighborhood, and usually that's in the form of sidewalks. So I'd be interested in seeing if there's some ability to put in some of that interconnectivity. As I said, I think it's good use. You won't have to cut down too many trees. It's pretty barren now. So I'm looking forward to seeing it when it comes to site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Have I got everybody? Can't remember. Did you, okay, my turn. Yes. I agree on the, the concept of a gathering space, a gathering place for, for children and adults. So I'm going to be taking a look at that, but I'm also going to be taking a look at how you're handling, how you're going to handle the, the tower. Because while it, now it's sitting out there by itself, as you start to put families all around it, kids are going to try and figure out how they can use that to play. So I'm going to be looking at what you're doing to set aside the tower area to ensure some safety, some security. That there's a maintenance of the turf around there, so the tower area, the turf just doesn't grow up, because now you've got people there. Now you've got people surrounding it. And so that, to me, is going to be important. Probably a security fence around the tower is going, is going to be needed, because children will be children, and teenagers do things too. The, the street itself, is it going to be public or private?
It'd be offered for, for, to be public and offered to the town.
Okay. So you've got the streetlights, you've got the sidewalks, all of the usual stuff that's required, you've got the street trees, all the stuff that's usually required for a, a public, a public street in the town. Let me see, there's only the one access. That's, that's too bad if, if there could be any sort of trails connecting to Leighton Farms, allowing people to walk, to do, to do more, you know, than just around the circle, that would be helpful. Take a look at that. The, is there going to be an HOA?
I don't know, we haven't discussed that at this point. You think so?
Well, if there is, I mean, that's, that's something you're going to have to, you're going to have to take a look at, and see what's, who's responsible for what, because as you start to put in, if you do put in any sort of open space, a gathering place, benches, someplace like that, then you're going to need a way to, to maintain it. Let me see, what else I had? I think that was pretty much what I had that was different, that was in addition to what my colleagues had said. Do you have any questions of us?
Not at this point, we're really just looking to get feedback and just your thoughts on the project and kind of the thoughts around the tower as well, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, wait a second. Ben?
I just had one more thought. I don't know if it's possible to do, but if you're not building the access road to Elmwood Avenue, perhaps a trail that could connect to there at least, and then if someone could, you know, walk a loop or something around there. Just, just an idea, might be desirable.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with Ben, I hadn't thought of it that way, but that's, that's also, that's also an area. You have no more questions of us?
I believe so. You guys got any question?
All right, we will see you.
Thank you very much.
Spring. When the temperature is warmer. Thank you. We now go to. We now go to Board Business, uh, 4.08, which is the election of officers. Uh, the way we do this, for those of you who are relatively new, um, the Secretary of the Board is Roger Beely, and Roger conducts the election for the Chair. Once the Chair is elected, uh, the uh, the new Chair conducts the elections of the Vice Chair and the Secretary uh and for the various liaisons if elections are needed. In other words, for the various liaisons, if only one person volunteers, uh, there's no election needed and the Board simply or the Chair simply rules that 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 person is now the official liaison of the committee. Uh, Autumn, will you? How many liaison positions do we have?
So we have three. We have the Transportation Committee, the Long Range Planning Commission, and the Conservation Commission, and they have to be regular Board members.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, not not alternates, but um, Ben, since you're on the Conservation Commission, uh, we would be well represented anyway. Our voice our voice would be heard, uh, but you could not be a you could not be a an official liaison of the Planning Board until you're an official Planning Board member rather than an alternate.
I'm also still an alternate on the Conservation Commission, so it's still. I'm alternates everywhere.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Roger, would you uh please uh conduct the election of the Chair?
Um, geez, I'm thrilled. This is my moment of power.
Yeah, there's there's not not it's it's not necessarily a lot that the Secretary does. Um, but there have there have been times actually when the Chair, the Vice Chair have been absent and the Secretary runs the meeting. So it's a scary sort of thing. Uh, but definitely it it has happened, yeah.
He did really good.
He did. Um, so the uh, it it plus, you know, filling in for the Chair and the Vice Chair, uh, plus uh the election of officers. So that is your important job, Roger.
Yes.
The all eyes are upon you and you're on TV. Go ahead.
I I was wondering because I think in the past it's always happened before the regular meeting started. So I was kind of a I I thought it was being passed over and.
No, I.
I thought maybe I was in trouble.
I thought about it and I figured if we do it at the beginning of the meeting, then then somebody gets up and moves aside, moves to another chair, moves their stuff, people shuffle around and it's a it seemed easier to do it this way.
Okay, so so the um the nominations for Chair of the Planning Board is now open? Does anybody have any anybody they want to nominate?
I've got a point of order question first.
Yep.
As an alternate, can I vote on this since I'm a voting member to this?
You are a you are a voting member for this meeting.
And can we vote for Jen Ladd for anything given that she's not currently here?
If she has agreed.
Well, that's when you want.
It's one of those things that, you know, a lot of people get elected to things because they aren't in the room. Uh, and this is such that uh she would have to she would have to agree. And a reminder, she is also the Chair of the Transportation Committee.
Right, okay.
Okay, now can I nominate somebody?
No, um, but I can nominate somebody, so I nominate Rick Meinke for Chair.
I'll second that.
Keep going, Roger.
Oh, and any other nominees?
Um, just for final nominee, Rachel Henderson, although she doesn't want to do it. She's done a great job as Chair for the last, I don't know how many years you've been Chair, but since I've been on the Board as an alternate, you've been Chair. I know this is probably your last year, but yeah, thank you.
Well, I I I appreciate it, but I, as I said, um, not as Chair.
Okay, um, I guess uh the nominations for Chair is closed. All those in favor? Or?
Of Rick Meinke.
And and I support him too.
Okay, Roger, I have the gavel, so I'm going to say uh Rick Meinke has been elected as Chair. Uh, I am going to pass this right over to Rick.
Now I've got the power. Now I have the power, Roger.
Boy, that was uh quick.
No, thanks. Um, you know, just a quick word. Um, I've been Vice Chair for you for three years, two or three years, and have learned a lot and um respect the amount of work that you do uh preparing for these meetings and guiding us through some of these tough things. So uh while you're not Chair, you're still a very valuable partner in this, and we're glad you're sticking around for another year.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So with that, I'd like to open up nominations for Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I would like to um nominate Rachel as the Vice Chair.
I nominate Jim Hebert.
Uh, I think probably we need seconds. Um, I I do accept Jim. I I I'm sorry. It's going to take me time to get used to.
I get you. I get you. That's all right. I'll acknowledge your your experience. Um, first, there's a there's a nomination of Rachel Henderson for Vice Chair, and we should acknowledge that. Uh, and and I I second that. Um, are there any other nominations?
I nominate Jim Hebert for the reason that if we have one more year of Rachel, um, it might be good to have some experience on a Vice Chair position from someone who's not the Chair or the Vice Chair. That's the only reason that I would do that. Um.
Do we have a do we have a second then for James Hebert? Seeing no second, I think we only have one uh nominee, and that's Rachel Henderson. Sorry, I stand corrected. Um, it's late. I'm sorry. Um, so at this point, I'd like to call a vote, and we can do it by a raise of hand. All in favor?
What do we vote on for Rachel?
That's what I said. Yes, Roger.
Okay, you see my hand?
I I see it raised, yes. Okay, thank you very much. So um, I'm pleased to have you you um backing me up if I'm not here.
I and, you know, slap my wrist if I forget and jump in.
I've got the mallet.
Yeah, you do. This this power, that makes a lot of noise.
Now, now we have to deal with the liaisons and.
No, Secretary.
Oh, right. And you gave me this cheat sheet and I already blew it. Um, we have to nominate a Secretary, one that has unusual writing skills and can conduct elections quite readily.
I nominate Roger Beely to continue as Secretary.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a nominee in Roger Beely and a second. All in favor? Keep your pen handy, buddy. So with that, the elections are are done. Now we just have to appoint some liaisons and um a couple of things. Given that Jen Ladd is not here, but she is also the Chair of the Transportation, um, I might respectfully request if we can delay the we can't delay.
Be the liaison.
Anyway.
Right. She wants to maintain her position.
If she's if she's the liaison, she can't vote and she can't be a member of the committee.
On the Transportation Committee, they are voting members. The liaison for this just just FYI.
Oh, so does that?
I believe Roger is the current liaison.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she's just on Transportation.
Gotcha, gotcha. And that's kind of the same with, okay. Sorry, I'm I'm working my way through this and I'm really botching it, isn't I, Roger?
You are.
So let's go to long-range planning because I have something to say about that. I would like to see that Rachel remain on that. Uh, they're really doing a lot of work with the ordinances and a lot of it has already been laid down. And if Rachel would agree to remain on, I would um like her to um represent our Board here.
I'll second.
I will do that.
All in favor? And Transportation, Roger has likewise been on Transportation as our as our liaison, and um he has a passion for it, and uh I think he's he's a good guy to have on it. So I uh I would encourage my fellow colleagues to consider Roger Beely for Liaison of Transportation.
I cer- I certainly would support that. Roger's been very good about reporting back to us.
Any other suggestions? Seeing none, all in favor of Roger at being Liaison of Transportation? There you go. And now the last one is Conservation. Um, and you have to be a voting member of this body in order to be a liaison. And we currently have who filling that role?
It's a new liaison that's. So right now, Ben is serving as alternate, but it's it's sort of that liaison, but it's not.
Gotcha. It's not official. So in that case, if if James Hebert would be um willing to be our our eyes and ears and follow up with us.
What do when do they meet? Because that's a major consideration.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Can I ask a question? Are we are we down a member? Uh, we're down a member of the Planning Board, right?
Just a we down a, sorry.
We're we're down to uh we're down a second alternate at this point.
Okay, so well, we're down a are we down a regular?
No.
No, and we don't lose anybody.
So who took?
Jen's just not here today.
Well, what I was getting at is do we have to nominate somebody for that position at the moment? Could we wait till we get somebody else and then is somebody gonna move into the?
Well, they had to be a voting member anyway, Roger, and that new person would be the second alternate likely.
I could if I could come and, you know, while while it would be nice to have somebody representing us as an official liaison, um, if we don't have anybody, then we don't have liaison. I frankly, I'm I'm comfortable with uh Ben getting the information back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
Because of his his role, but since he can't be an official liaison, he still can get us information.
The information. I hear you, but I also.
Uh, huh?
Can I can be an unofficial liaison?
Okay, but I still I still want to extend my thought is to bring uh James in as a voting member of this body to be recognized as the liaison.
Yeah.
Not to slight anything that you can bring as well, Ben. Uh, but again, I'm putting that out and if your schedule allows it.
Yeah, can do I have to make a decision at this moment or can I have a check with?
We can we can revisit it next. We can revisit it next month.
Cool, thank you.
All right, so we'll hold that we'll hold that open until next month. Staff, you're all right with that, Autumn?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, can I ask a question? Who who so is Ben the first alternate right now?
Yes.
And we so we don't have a second alternate?
That's correct.
Okay.
The Appointments Committee met last week, Roger, and they have a recommendation. They're moving forward to council, but we don't have um it's not official yet.
Okay.
So we will hopefully for our February meeting have a full seven.
But that won't solve any liaison.
But it won't solve any liaison issues.
You're right, right.
Now, let me ask you another question, Autumn. Uh, on the Transportation Committee, I'm actually on a term on that committee. I'm serving a term.
Oh.
So if I weren't on it as a liaison, I guess I could still be on the Transportation Committee just as a citizen, right?
Just like you are now, right?
No, right now Roger is officially the Planning Board Liaison. So if you guys voted, say, for somebody else to say James sit in that position, so you're you would term out of the Transportation Committee and he would be fulfilling your seat.
I would be ousted?
No, I'm not ousting you. I'm hypothetically speaking, was the conversation, and James, I'm sure, has no interest in transportation.
You're making this complicated, Roger.
I mean, I'd love.
It is. It is complicated, though. I totally appreciate what Roger's saying because transportation is a little different and everybody is a voting member. Um, and to to his point, there is terms associated with that as well, but this would overrule it because you guys would be voting in your liaison. So that would kind of, I assume, supersede it, but Clerk's Office has.
We'll be clarification for next month. How's that? And if we have to rejockey that, uh, we can certainly do that.
Maybe if the sidewalk czar has a position available, I'll take that.
Well, to make it more complicated, there are like term limits, right? So if you're on, I I don't know how that would work with a liaison, though. If you're if you have your three terms.
No, I I don't. Well, you're annually.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think there's term limits for liaisons. It's that's a business of each committee.
Right, and so that's where speaking to what Roger's saying is actually Transportation might be unique in the fact that there are term limits for that as well. So it's it's something the Clerk's Office can muddle through.
One last one last question. Who's the Council Liaison to the Planning Board?
Uh, Councilor Shoup.
Shoup?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And she has been, she actually was logged in. Yeah, she's still on. Oh, she is. There she is.
All right, that conducts um that finishes that portion of our agenda. We're almost done. Uh, we need to hear about any minor development reviews.
None at this time.
Any administrative amendment reports? Correspondence?
None at this time.
Now we're to Planning Board comments. Any planners wanna make a comment? Go ahead, Ben?
I would just like to thank Rachel for her tremendous service as Planning Board Chair for the past, I don't know how many years you've been the Chair for, but my entire term on the Board, and I think you've been wonderful at instructing us and helping uh, you know, the town, doing great service to us all, and I'm really appreciative, and I know I speak for everyone when I say that. So thank you so much, Rachel.
Thank you.
I'll second those comments as well. Um, a real inspiration on how to properly lead a meeting, um, especially when it gets contentious out there. So greatly appreciate it. Um, I do have another comment question um just regard to like West Scarborough. I know like a few months ago, uh, Autumn, you had mentioned possibility of like the town looking into doing a new comprehensive plan for West Scarborough. Has there been any movement on that or?
It's actually uh what we were talking about is I I called it a an RF cop plan, and then we also need to look at Running Hill, and both of those items are up for discussion for the Council Goals this year. So I'll update you in February where then where that ends up.
We not call it Planapalooza again?
We will not call it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
That was Jay Chase.
Yeah, I I would like to thank the members of of this Board um for the the work they do. I and the preparation and the um insightful comments. Um, I'm I always learn something when I come here um from from the members because they see things I don't see. Uh, and um, I think the Planning Board in Scarborough um should be held up as a as really a a model for how things work and for the um, I guess the 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 committee that that's involved with us working together uh and working together for the benefit of the the people in Scarborough. So I appreciate all of the help you've provided uh and all of your insights. Um, I can't remember how long I've been Chair. I think it's three years, but I'm not I'm not sure.
I.
Yeah, yeah, but you've only been here a couple of years.
If I may.
Any anyhow, I I'm going into my ninth year a on the Planning Board.
If I may, I'd like to commend Rachel too for um, you know, being the Chair. Uh, I know she's done a lot of work. She's a terrific parliamentarian and uh and so I uh, you know, I really do commend you for the work you put in. There's um, people don't realize how much work the Chair, you know, um, is involved. I don't think. There's, um, people don't realize how much work the Chair, you know, um, is involved. I don't think Rick knows.
Thanks, Roger. I got a piece of it a couple of times. But I, I concur those sentiments, and as I said earlier, um, it's, it's always nice to, to have somebody that you can model after. Uh, although we all bring our own characteristics and personalities into the equation. Uh, but the bottom line is, you said it very well, uh, this group of dedicated people are here because they want to help and be part of solutions, and, uh, for that, I commend all of us.
I, I do have one final comment, and that is I appreciated the opportunity, uh, to quote Robert Burns at a Planning Board meeting.
With that.
Proving that a doctorate isn't totally useless in English.
There you go. With that, I think we're at the adjournment portion of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
We're done.